Hi, Winston is not here. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask our neighborhood board take a roll call.
Hi.
Okay, so attendance for board members, Alan?
Aye.
Boito? Boito? Sorry, your mic's on. David? Not here. Decker? Not here.
Uh, here, here I am, I'm here, yep.
Okay, sorry.
Here, thank you.
Hasina? Con?
Uh, here.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, I'm late, sorry.
Knight? Here. Mattson? Not here. Murchy? Murchy? I see her name on here. Velasco? Chair Welch? Not here. Whitesall?
Here.
Oh, thank you. Bruce Wong? Linda Wong? Okay, we have nine board members here, we have Quorum.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the next order of business is filling of board vacancies. We have one vacancy at the Diamond Head Sub District Three. Is anyone either present or on the Zoom call that wants to fill that vacancy? You want to? Okay, we have in person. Uh, you wanna come up? Does she come up and?
Uh, you can come up and introduce yourself if you would like.
Aloha, I'm, is this on? Okay, I'm Laura St. Dennis. I was a member of the board for a number of years and uh, quit for a while due to illness and ran into Winston and Whole Foods and he said, please come back. And so here I am. Uh, I live at thirty-eight ten Leahie. My major project before was to get our street back from Mary Jones and that took a couple of years. We still don't have our parking with the mayor and Roger Formby both said they planned on giving the parking back to the neighborhood again for people in the community garden to use, um, what is legal. And so that is one of the issues I would like to approach again. And so I still live in the neighborhood. I work, um, I retired from Department of Education and I work part-time Tuesdays and Fridays at Foster Botanical Garden Gift Shop. Fun, fun place to come visit and enjoy. Um, do you have any questions for me? Anybody?
Um, so what do we do? Do we call a vote? Yet to, uh, oh yes, we have to have a nomination, correct?
I don't know, I'm in Laura St. Dennis.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Dan Decker.
Okay, so now we called the vote. Okay, now we'll call, can you call the vote?
Okay, you can just call the name, um, sorry, what's the name? Laura, okay. Alan?
Uh, ye- yes.
Okay, yeah, you could just say Laura. Boito? Boito? Oh, thumbs up. Can you give a thumbs up? Like, thank you. Decker?
Uh, thumbs up. Or yes, aye.
David? Hasina?
Yes.
You could just say her name, Laura?
Laura.
Con? Laura. Knight? Laura. Mattson? Murchy? Velasco?
Laura.
Whitesall?
Laura.
Bruce Wong? Linda Wong? Chair Welch? Okay. So, eight, okay, we have eight, um, votes for Laura, so welcome to the board.
Welcome, Laura, do you wanna join us here? All right, all right, so now we're gonna go on to, well, Laura gets checked out for her residency, I know where she lives. Um, we're going to fill, cross the street. We're going to fill, ask our public, start our Public Safety Monthly Report. Um, so we have the Honolulu Fire Department, are they here? The Waikiki Station?
We're here, we're here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody, aloha. Uh, my name is Eldon Tanaka, I am a fire captain here on Engine Seven Waikiki. Uh, we have our report for July twenty-twenty-four. I have firefighter one Lance Antai to do that for us.
Good evening, Neighborhood Board. Um, the statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month, so July of twenty-twenty-four. So the incident statistics for July of twenty-twenty-four for fires, we have one structure fire, one wildland or brush fire, zero nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and zero activated alarms with no fire. Um, other emergencies that we've had was sixty-six medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, one motor vehicle crash or collision, three mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous material incident. Uh, the fire safety tips and announcements for the month is back-to-school fire safety. Educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire-safe environment. So a couple tips would be to not overload outlets. Keep lamps, light fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances such as a refrigerator. Cook only where it is allowed, keeping the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. If a disaster happens, knowing who to call and where to meet is an important part of emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally and one contact out of town who may be easier to reach during the disaster. Um, should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Community Relations Office at And that's all.
All right, thank you. Um, I think there was a question from last time about a location chart and report of brush fires April twenty-twenty-four through August twenty-twenty-four. Were you able to get, um, that done?
Uh, no, our department is directing the Neighborhood Board and, and everyone to our, our website and they can request, uh, incident reports through that website.
All right, thank you. Add that to the agenda. Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody in, in person have a question? Does anyone on, online have a question? Nope, okay, then we will go on to the Honolulu Police Department, District Six.
Uh, good evening, good evening, everybody, I'm Lieutenant Blake Arida. I'm, uh, representing District Six Waikiki. So for the month of July, we had six robberies, six burglaries, a hundred seventy-six thefts, twelve car break-ins, forty-three assaults, nine sex crimes, four bike skateboard, uh, bike skateboard on sidewalk, sidewalk citations, eight speeding citations, one thousand eight hundred sixteen parking citations, six, uh, loud muffler prohibited noise citations, sixty park closure citations and seven park closure arrests, and we had three thousand seven hundred eighty-nine calls for service. Um, one thing I wanna talk about in regards to, um, safety tips is being aware of your surroundings and that comes into play because, uh, recently we've been having some thefts and car break-ins in the Hibiscus Road Diamond Head area and people reported seeing like, um, two males on mopeds acting suspiciously. So, uh, you know, if you're aware of your surroundings and you notice anything suspicious, you know, feel free to just call nine-one-one and report it. Um, it can be non-emergency or emergency depending on the situation, but if you think it's something suspicious or something that needs an officer to check it out, feel free to call and an officer will go down, check the area and maybe even, um, talk to these individuals, you know, maybe scare them away and maybe we can prevent a crime or something like that. But, uh, that just happened a couple of days ago, you know, we've been having some incidents over there. So, uh, just be mindful of that and, you know, if you live in the area or if you see anything like that or, you know, if you see anything suspicious. Um, and just another thing that this weekend, we're having three events in Waikiki. We're having a event at the Waikiki Shell. Uh, we also have a sunset on the beach and also a, a block party along Kalakaua Avenue. So there's gonna be a lot of traffic, a lot of, uh, um, you know, closures and everything like that, so just be mindful and I'll be here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have, uh, questions from anyone in the house? Um, I, I have a really quick question. I've been getting a lot of, um, people calling me about chicken complaints and, um, I direct them to the police department, is that correct?
Hmm, chicken like, uh, noise?
Noise, that they can't sleep.
Um, no, we don't really handle that. I mean, we, we can refer, I, I gotta look it up, but I don't think the Humane Society does it either. I believe it was, um, another, uh, city entity that they trapped the chickens and everything like that. But, um, I, I can get that information too. I know we had that problem in Waikiki and we generally don't answer chicken call. I mean, we'll go, we'll, we'll go and check it out and see what we can do for you, but, um, as far as the government, the city entity is not us. But I can get that information because we had a lot of chickens in Waikiki before.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, they wanted me to do something about it through the community garden and I declined. Um, so the next one, um, anybody in line have a question? Chastity? You wanna unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Chastity Santiago Almo.
Hi, Chastity.
Department of Customer Services. What they have is they offer a chicken trap. So if you look on top of their website or just they do have a chicken trap, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll drop the flyer link below in just a bit, but they would be your best point of contact for the chicken issues.
Can you repeat who that was again?
Department of Customer Services, DCS.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and in the comments, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll drop the flyer link for that as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, any more questions from the audience? I see another hand. Amanda?
Hi, Arlene, hello everyone, Amanda from Chair Water's office. I just wanna clarify, um, before we start getting a bunch of calls that it is customer, Department of Customer Services who oversees the chicken mitigation, feral chicken mitigation program. However, the question was specific to noise and that unfortunately doesn't fall under CSD, that has to go to HPD.
Okay. All right, then I, I guess I gave him the right information.
It's, I know it's confusing, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
It's not a, it's not a high priority for our police department, I realize that.
I know, yeah, and there, you know.
I don't know if we go and chase down the chicken making noise though, so we're gonna have to go over there and check it out, but I don't know if we really, there's much we can do about that.
Yeah.
I don't think we can cite that chicken, that's why, or arrest the chicken, so.
Yeah, but depending on where they are, you, uh, you know, ha- asking City Department of Customer Services to go check it out through their vendor might help, you know, reduce the number and that might help the noise issue. But, you know, just technically, any noise complaints have to go to HPD.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Um, then, I think, any other questions? Nope, okay, then we can go on to District Seven, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon Detective, uh, sorry, Lieutenant Thompson, District Seven Day Watch. I'll start with the stats for July. Uh, we had twelve motor, motor vehicle thefts, one burglary, nineteen thefts and ten unauthorized, unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases. Uh, total calls for the service for July, six thousand four hundred and twelve. Um, safety tip for the month, I'd like to, um, bring light on the, the fake jewelry scam that's been going around our islands and also in, in our district. Um, there's a group of individuals working together. Um, they approach, uh, people at shopping malls, shopping centers, stores and, um, they give a sad story of how they're in desperate need of cash. Either their things got stolen or they were lost and they need the money to get back to, uh, wherever they came from and, um, they're selling their jewelry at a heavy, heavy discount. We found that this jury is, is fake and it's worthless and people have been scammed out of thousands and thousands of dollars and they mainly target, um, elderly. So if you can let your family members know to be careful not to buy jewelry from people in the parking lots and, um, just get them through reputable dealers and stores. And if anything suspicious is seen, just call nine-one-one. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay, anybody in the audience have a question? Okay, anybody online, I see a hand up. Daisy?
Thank you, Vice Chair, my question is segway tours. Are they allowed to ride on the sidewalk? I know that they can't, um, drive their segways on the streets, but they can go on the sidewalks, but are tourists or maybe bicycle tourists, are those legal?
Uh, as far as I know, yeah, they are legally, they, they, there's not very much regulation on those motorized scooters, segways and the bicycles at this time.
Okay, thank you, because as you know, the city just took over Viki Hawaii, so you're gonna have, um, electric bicycles also roaming around that as, as to another, um, death of checking people for not being so reckless. But, um, just to let you know, another city, um, entity that, um, you'll be posting and watching. So we appreciate all the hard work that the Police Department and Fire Department does, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, do you have something? Oh, okay, sorry, your hand was just still up. Okay, then.
Oh, so, so, uh, yeah. My phone is acting funny tonight. I just wanted to add, hi Daisy, um, regulation, yeah, it, it's a tough one, that one and, um, it's confusing what, what is on the books and it's state law. So, um, a couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Okimoto introduced a resolution, um, basically from the City Council urging the state to take a look at what they have and to clear up and clarify, um, and add a whole bunch of things. Um, because a lot of us are concerned, that's, that's one of the main concerns that we receive more and more, um, so you're not. We're asking our state partners at the legislature to help us out with that.
Great, thank you, Amanda.
It helps.
Yes, I've been almost run over several times while I'm on my morning jogs by a scooter. Okay, so let's go on and are we done with, uh, the police District Seven? I think we are, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now let's go on to the Board of Water Supply, Kathleen?
Aloha, nice to see everybody. Uh, no main breaks to report for your district. I do have a handout, I hope there's some up there on the table, I hope you got one. Uh, Board of Water Supply is participating in a water access and affordability survey taking place in communities across the country. We're part of a fellowship program to develop access and affordability programs. It's one of the things that we heard very clearly when we were out doing our rates, um, outreach last year was the cost. Now, water itself, it isn't inherently expensive, but we know everything else is. So every time we can help whatever it is, it, it's a good thing. So we're asking everyone to take the survey, can scan the QR code, it takes about five to ten minutes and we really, you know, give it to your friends, family, everybody, your neighbors. The more people we get, the better our data will be. So thank you for that. Okay, and responses, of course, are all confidential. Uh, we do have some, uh, construction projects in your community. Uh, the Monserrat, uh, project, uh, right now has not yet started. It looks like it'll start in January twenty-twenty-five. We are still experiencing, uh, delays in getting, um, materials. So the pipe has been delayed and it doesn't look like we'll get it until about December. But as soon as we do, we'll make sure that you guys are in the loop as to what's happening on the progress of that project. And, uh, Diamond Head, we're continuing the installation of the twelve-inch water main on Polikaua Street. So that continues. If you have any questions regarding any of our construction projects, please contact me at eight oh eight seven four eight five three one nine, that is my direct line. And then the Diamond Head fencing project, we're just about done with the, um, I think we're done with the painting and we're working on the landscaping and that is a project we were working with Chair Welch and Board Member Mattson on as well. And finally, you had a question, uh, Vice Chair Velasco. At the last meeting, you asked where we plan to drill for new wells on Oahu to make up for the loss caused by the Navy's Red Hill disaster. So we lost three wells, uh, Aia, Halava and then the Halava Shaft. The lava shaft supplies twenty percent of the water to Metro Honolulu and then Diamond, uh, I, uh, Iaan Halava, fifty percent of the water to the Iaan Halava area. So yes, we have about, uh, three, I think we're looking at three exploratory wells up in the Pearl City Newtown area. As you can imagine, it's difficult to find an area where we can drill because it is grown in and so built up down there, uh, to find a, a location that's not going to be negatively impact the community while we're doing the construction. But we do have a couple areas and we're working on that. So, um, our hope, I think, is for three exploratory wells and if they are good production wells, we'll be able to put them in, but that's a, a year or two down the road.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the audience or the Board of Waters, Kathleen? Uh, I, oh, yes. Wanna get, come up to the mic?
I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the contaminants that were found in the I AOL from, related to the, um, Red Hill spill.
Um, can you give us your name?
Sorry, my name's Tina Nakata Grandit, thank you.
Um, yeah, we're working on that one. Um, okay, so we recently, back on June fourth, detected something called PAH. Do not ask me what the chemical name is, I can't begin to pronounce it. Uh, it's not something we have found before. Now, it is found, was found in a well that is not in production, so it was turned off. We did alert EPA and DOH and we are expecting a response from them in the next couple of days. We sent them a letter on July seventh and this letter was published on our website. We put all of our correspondence up there for the public to review. Uh, when we went back and did a further test, because we test those wells weekly, we did not find anything. The concern, of course, that we have is what does this mean about contaminants moving in to our water further from the Red Hill? So we don't have a determination yet, we're looking at it. We'll be meeting with different, uh, technical experts. Uh, we have alerted our congressional delegation and we are alerting the elected officials in that, uh, general area, the I A Pearl City area. Uh, but that well is not producing water, it's not being delivered to homes. So whatever we found kinda came and went. So, um, but again, we need more data and we need to really push the Navy to allow us to test their wells because that would help us figure out where the, where everything is going. So, thank you, Tina, great question.
Laura?
So was it organic or chemical?
It was a chemical, uh, that is found usually in crude oil.
Um, I have a question for you. Um, there's been a lot on the press about PFOS and I know that it's on, some of the information is on your website, can you just direct people?
So, uh, yeah, we publish all of our test results, no matter where, what they're from, up on our website. Uh, if you go to our homepage, you'll see a little button at the top that says Red Hill and it'll take you to page with all of our various test results. We've been publishing our test results for, gosh, probably five or six years at, at minimum. But, uh, we have detected very low levels of PFOS below the EPA's new level for PFOS and PFOA at two parts per trillion. And we haven't, uh, and then the other, there's another group of four chemicals and it's one is the hazard number and we detected that at less than one wherever we have. So the eight wells that we've detected, most, seven of them are all in the central Oahu area. Uh, Waipahu, Waikeli, Makakilo, so kinda up in that area. We did find one hit in Inacoa, but we think that was an anomaly because we never had got it again. And that's not really anywhere near, um, sites that we think might be causing the, uh, PFOS like up in Kuni'a, which is not that far from Schofield and if you know, they all use firefighting foam and things like that. But of course PFOS is also found all over and pretty much everything that we use, it's, it's there. Uh, we test weekly on any of the wells that we have found, we test regularly and we, and again, we'll get a hit and then the next time we go back, we don't get it again. There's only one well, Halava, that we've had a consistent hit on PFOS, but it's again well below the EPA's level and it hasn't gotten, it just stays at the point two or one point nine, whatever that number is.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, anybody, uh, online that want, has a question? Okay, no questions?
And I know Board Member Mattson also asked a PFOS question about what we're doing in terms of lawsuits. Our board will be meeting on that in executive session this month and I'll be able to report back to the board and community next month, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next we have, oh, Capital and the Community College, we were told that she's not gonna be able to join tonight. So let's go on to, um, public events, notices and announcements. There is a planning meeting tomorrow night, and not tomorrow night, Monday night, I'm jumping ahead, August twelfth at twenty-twenty-four at Kamaki High School Auditorium. It's six, six o'clock to seven-thirty and if you can make it, it'd be great to see, um, what the change of the City Council is proposing to our especially, specifically affecting our area on the zoning law changes and other changes, development, allowing developments. So hopefully we can all show up at this meeting. Any questions on that? All right, then let's go on to community concerns. Let's start with the people that are present. Any questions? Any concerns? Yes, can you please come up?
Hello there, my name is Michael. I just live in the area. My concern is the construction or the little island they put near Leonard's Bakery. Um, I don't know what the purpose of that is, like, who's using that crosswalk? There are two perfectly good crosswalks that are safer with lights. One by Safeway and one by Crane Park. Um, all they're doing is just making it a hazard. Cars have already hit it, you can see the marks on there. And people that are gonna be crossing there are most likely gonna get hit, I guarantee you that. Um, there are, like I said, two perfectly good crosswalks on the other side. You don't need that crosswalk there. There's a couple other crosswalks we don't need as well, like the one in front of Safeway. It's not safe, there's no lights. And the one in front of, oh yeah, those two. Yeah, so I'm wondering like, whose idea was it to put that there?
Well, I think that would be our, uh, mayor question, right? Question? That's.
GTS, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Under the mayor.
Just like to see.
It's under the ma- the county.
Yeah, so are they planning on putting on another traffic light there?
We can ask them. We can ask them. We're gonna. Complete Streets, yeah. So, Michael, can you give us your last name?
Kukal, Charlie Alpha, Charlie Alpha Lima.
Arne, I can answer a little bit of that.
Okay, thank you. That's Amanda.
Hi, sir. My name is Amanda Zapata. I'm with City Council Chair Waters Office. For the, the new island median for pedestrians by Leonard's Bakery, that one is a relocation of the crosswalk from the opposite side. We had been for a very long time having, you know, too many incidents at that particular pedestrian crosswalk. Department of Design and Construction, in partnership with Department of Transportation Services, did a study and decided that it would be safer. Conditions should improve with relocating it to the opposite side of, of the street. Basically, that same street. So that's what's happening there. And I think part of the problem is that they installed that median before finishing the rest of the crosswalk. So people aren't quite understanding what's happening there. But according to the administration, there was a study done, a traffic analysis by Department of Transportation Services, and it was decided upon that it would be safer or improve safety to move it across to the other side. And then for the rest of, I'm not, I, I don't have information on the other crosswalk that you mentioned, but I know that Department of Transportation Services is taking a look at that whole corridor and seeing what kind of improvements can be done. There's a zero, Vision Zero draft document that we can send out to you that has a lot of information about high-traffic injury corridors and what intersections they have identified for improvement. So that might be something of interest to you, too.
Definitely. Yeah, I don't know if they did the study properly. Oh, yeah. I like that.
Happy to take that back. Amanda?
Amanda.
Zapata? Yeah, with City Council Chair Waters Office.
Waters, got it. Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Great, thank you for that. Anybody else have a community concern in-house? Yeah, I was, I just, I was going to stick to the in-house and I'm not going to online.
Okay.
Anybody else here? Nobody else? Now you're up.
Okay, thank you. I wrote a email or a letter to the Director of DFM and Mike Formby and told them that the showers at Diamond Head are not working, that there's a lot of problems. They weren't built to spec. There was a lot of letters to the editor. And that I think a bid of $500,000 would be enough for the developer to come back and fix it. The reason I'm mentioning it was, last meeting, Senator Ihaara said that if we have the backing of the board, we can go ahead and talk to the developers. And I would like to do that. So I would like to know, this is a community concern, and if anybody on the board would not like me to do that.
So your question, Linda, is you want somebody on the board to, you want the board to vote on it?
I don't think they need to have a vote. But if there's anybody that wouldn't want me to talk to the developers about Kaimana Beach showers and all of its pitfalls, that they should voice themselves. And then if they don't mind, then they don't have to say anything.
Okay, is there anybody on the board who objects to Linda going to talk to the developers? She can. I mean, I don't think there's anything binding you, Linda, as a community member.
I just wanted to make it public.
Yeah.
Charlene, can I, can I comment a little bit about the, the median and the thing by Leonard's?
Uh, yes.
So I actually live across from there, and there are people crossing all day long, starting as soon as Leonard's opens, very early in the morning. It causes so much traffic. Actually, the parking lot is a bigger issue. And the cars that come and literally block the street and park all over trying to drop people off. But the, it is, it is very widely used because unfortunately, the trolley stop is across the street. So you have tourists coming from Waikiki nonstop. And they're not going to take a crosswalk that's nowhere near their destination, which is only Leonard's. It's literally the only thing they're coming for. And then I think that that median is, it's really meant to slow down traffic because people go way too fast on Kapahulu. It is absolutely terrifying. I see accidents most days because I walk everywhere. I don't even try to drive because the traffic is too bad at this point. There's a similar situation in Kailua on the main road there, and it works so well. All the traffic stops. It's so safe. But they also have, like, blinking lights. And it's been there for a while, so people have gotten used to it. But it is, it's a great system to have that median because then no one has to run the whole way across. You can go part of the way and wait and then go. But it definitely, it definitely takes getting used to, but that's used kind of all over the country.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I've, I've seen that all over the coastal communities in California.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We were on the Kaimana Beach issue. Kaimana showers, sorry. Kaimana beach showers.
We're on Citizens Concerns, I think.
Yeah, and, and that was, I was, any comments?
I got some comments.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah. You know, I, I brought this up many times before. But if you drive down Kalii Street in front of Palakau Intermediate School, along that drive, there used to be a lot of accidents. It was like a speedway, but they have about five elevated crosswalks. And it, it basically prevents anybody from speeding. They have it on Poly Highway. I've brought this up before. I visited Maui and one of the subdivisions, they had those elevated crosswalks throughout the whole subdivision. And so it makes so much sense to do something like that. And to me, it's a lot cheaper than putting in lights and medials in the center of the road.
Yeah, all those traffic calming devices do work.
Yeah, it does. And you should drive, drive down Kalii Street, right in front of Kalakau Intermediate, and you, you'll see how they work. I used to drive through that area before all the time. And now people can't speed.
We have two other.
The speed humps.
Okay, we have Laura and Margaret on deck. Let's go with Laura first.
Hey, can you, anything okay? Arlene?
Yes.
Arlene? Yes, my question is this. I could talk in community concerns, but if Anton Crokey is going to talk in Section 8 as the mayor's rep, I can do it at that time, too. Although I overlap a little bit with what Bruce said. And I would say that I have wanted and actively advocated for cross, raise crosswalks at both Kohiyo School and Alawai School, where there are blind corners and they're very dangerous for, for parents and children crossing. And it seems like it's been a couple of years I've been asking for them. So I would just piggyback onto what Bruce is saying. But I have concerns when the mayor's rep comes on.
Yeah, I hope we, the, unfortunately, the mayor's was deleted from our agenda by accident. So we're going to have to do a quick little vote to add the mayor back. So that's what we're going to do first thing when we get to our elected officials' report. Hopefully, Anton is here.
Okay, so.
Hopefully, Anton is here. Okay, and let's see. There was somebody else, I thought, had a hand up online?
I raised my hand.
Oh, she lowered it. Okay.
No.
All right.
I, I'm raising my hand.
All right, Linda?
Okay. I just wanted to mention that the city is having to retrofit all the speed humps because the buses and trolleys and things like that can't go over them. They're too high. So you have to be careful what you're doing.
Well, I hope that they would consider that when they're, you know, adding, when they, if they decide to add the speed humps.
Well, they're doing, they're unretrofitting a lot of them right now because they're damaging the buses and the trolleys.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you, Linda. Okay, Angie has a question.
I just wanted to add to this. This is more of a message to our board and to our community members. Again and again, we talk about the safety concerns and we bring it up. And I know it goes to the mayor and to the city councils. For them to put in this speed hump bump thing, it's actually a study that has to be done. And then that's how they decide what to do. I suggest, I recommend, if we can write a resolution, but I suggest that we hold another pedestrian safety subcommittee meeting. And they're really like, hammer out which streets that we know the community concerns. And that way, we can have it written documentation of it and saying, like, please have a study. We see a day in and dig out. And then also the Leonard's, because that was a study done. But now we're seeing, even though it's in the middle of the phase of the relocation of this ed sidewalk, we're still seeing unintended consequences of that. So that's just my recommendation, just to get them to kind of motivate to get the study done. But I do know Complete the Streets is looking at that, but I don't know the timeline on that.
All right. Thank you, Angie. That's a good recommendation. I think we should do that as well. So the, I'm looking at traffic and public safety. Margaret Merchi, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm just, I was just writing a, writing something in the chat. There was a letter today to the editor about deleting the bus stop. I know that's off topic, but I know the Winston and Amanda and Tommy Waters Office went, walked Kapahulu. And they, there are plans in place for, trying to figure out what to do there. There was a letter to the editor today about deleting the bus stop, bus stops along Park on the, you know, along the Gold Coast. And people are upset. And I just, I know that's probably Anton, but maybe not because it's DTS, really. And there are a lot of people that need that, that route. And so wondered what he had to say about that.
Okay, well, hopefully.
And Daisy brought it up last time.
Okay, we have two presentations we want to get to. Linda, do you have something you want to say?
Well, we're getting so much infrastructure with no rules because of the housing in Lahaina. And there's things going up everywhere. And we can't get out anymore. We can't go down Kapahulu. We can't go down Date. We can't go down Kapialani. We, we just can't get out anymore. And all this other stuff they're adding and the traffic calming surely don't go together because I can't get anywhere to get out of my neighborhood.
Okay, well, we're gonna, it might be worthwhile to attend the meeting on Monday. And we can include this in that, in that meeting. So let's go on to our presentations. The, the first one is the, how do you pronounce that? Oh, excuse me?
Acting Chair, I am online if you want to insert me into the meeting.
Oh, great. Okay, well, we're gonna, well, we could insert you right now, and then we'll go back to the presentations. So the board, we're going to, can, is there a motion to add the mayor back to the agenda?
I'd like to add the mayor back to the agenda.
Okay, there's a second with Laura?
Second.
Do we have to do a vote? Okay, let's assume it's going to be unanimous vote unless there's an objection. So anybody have an objection? Okay, no? Then we are good. We're going to add the mayor back. So he'll be the first one added after, when we get to the elected officials' report. So right now, we're going to go back to the presentations. Is someone here? Jaiola Chang? Are they online or in person? Nope. Okay, then let's go on to the Waikiki War Memorial. Bradley?
Hi, Webex, can you see the shared screen on my side?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I can't see it.
Good to get started?
Yes, good to get started.
Aloha, board members and members of the public. Thank you for hosting us this evening and allowing us the opportunity to provide you with an update on the city and county's efforts to rehabilitate the Waikiki War Memorial Complex Nautatorium. My name is Bradley Furia, and I'm a planner with PBR Hawaii. We are assisting AECOM in their work with the city and county of Honolulu Department of Design and Construction. Also with, with me this evening in the audience are Vincent Shigekuni from PBR Hawaii, Courtney Himes from AECOM, and Haku Mills in Clifford Lao from the Department of Design and Construction. We have about 10 or so informational slides to run through, and then we'll attempt to answer any questions you may have. We'll start with a brief historic timeline of the War Memorial Nautatorium. The Waikiki War Memorial is a living memorial to the men and women of Hawaii who served in World War I and all veterans. The facility opened on Duke Hanamoku's birthday in 1927 with his inaugural dive into the swimming basin before a large audience. The site is recognized as a significant historic property listed on the Hawaii and National Registers of Historic Places and more recently designated as a national treasure by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Unfortunately, maintenance, structural, and water quality issues have plagued the nautatorium since its early years. Numerous projects and alternatives have been considered to address these issues. The idea of demolishing the nautatorium and constructing a beach in its place was first proposed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in 1972 as part of the Waikiki Beach Widening Project that was halted by litigation. The War Memorial Beach Concept was included in a 1982 master plan for Kapialani Park. The proposed demolition spurred efforts by community groups to restore and preserve the nautatorium. This led to the 1995 Department of Land and Nat- and Natural Resources Environmental Impact Statement for complete restoration. This project moved to the construction phase, but was halted by a lawsuit. The settlement allowed for restoration of the land-based portions. However, the 2002 saltwater pool rules with requirements for water quality, clarity, and exchange rates resulted in abandonment of this design alternative. In 2014, the War Memorial Beach, the preferred alternative in an EIA, in an EA EIS Preparation Notice by the city and county. The proposed demolition of the nautatorium spurred opposition from veteran and historic preservation organizations. Veteran and preserving organizations. I'll pause until we get that.
Hi, can you turn off your mic, Linda?
Can you turn off your mic, Linda?
Okay, moving on. A closed pool system was also included as an alternative in the 2014 EA EIS Preparation Notice. We could move on to the. In an effort to find an alternative that satisfies historic preservation standards and is not subject to Department of Health Saltwater Pool Rules, the current perimeter deck alternative has been developed. This was also the preferred alternative identified in the 2019 Environmental Impact Statement. Under the perimeter deck alternative, the swim area would be open to the ocean on two sides. Next, yeah, thank you. This slide illustrates the identified objectives of the proposed project. And I'll give you a sec to read through those. Okay, on, on the next slide, you can see that the project seeks to appropriately preserve and rehabilitate character-defining features while addressing key structural and while addressing key structural and life safety issues. The proposed improvements will change very little about the existing appearance of the facility and the site. The deck would be reconstructed within the same footprint and with the same above-water appearance as the original. The main difference would be the removal of the Eva and Makai sea walls and the reconstruction of a pile-supported deck. The seawall on the Diamond Head side of the swim area would be reconstructed to protect San Sochi Beach. This slide shows the major architectural features of the nautatorium facade that will be rehabilitated. The pilasters, large urns, and archways shown here will be replaced in kind. Nonoriginal doors, windows, grills, and handrails will be removed. Original rounded arched windows and rectangular grill windows will be repaired or replaced in kind as needed. And the flagpoles and ball finials will also be repaired or replaced in kind as needed. To address life safety concerns, railings will be installed along the Howa Tree Arbor and San Sochi Beach. Horizontal crossbars will also be installed within the diamond openings. The parking and volleyball courts will be retained in the courtyards with minor rehabilitation and landscaping improvements. There will be no loss in parking stalls. Except trees will be retained. The existing pedestrian path will be improved and extended to connect with the shoreline promenade. And finally, the walkway to the Roll of Honor plaque will be made ADA compliant. Here are the environmental review and land use approvals that have occurred or expected to occur. A final environmental impact statement was accepted by the mayor's office in November 2019. The Department of Design and Construction anticipates submitting an SMA major and shoreline setback variance application later this year. Following approval of these land use permits, the Department of Design and Construction will submit an application for a Diamond Head Special District Minor Permit. This last slide lists the federal and state permits that have been or are expected to be acquired as part of the project. A Department of the Army Nationwide Permit Application has been submitted. A coral and bent湖 habitat survey was completed to support essential fish habitat consultation with the National Marine Fisheries Service. Invitations to participate in Section 106 consultation will be mailed out shortly. And if anyone wants to be included on the Section 106 consultation list, you'd be happy to add your name. Finally, Oi Revise Statute's 6E consultation has been initiated with the Department of Land and Natural Resources State Historic Preservation Division, which has preliminarily concurred the determination of effect with proposed meeting in the form of rehabilitation. Consultation will be ongoing through the Section 106 process and review of final plans for rehabilitation. And that concludes our presentation. Uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you very much. Um, is there any questions from the audience? Please come up, state your name.
Hi, my name's Tony, and I work at the Waikiki Aquarium. What's going to happen to everything that's in the current structure, um, to mitigate our intake waters that keep our fish alive in there?
So the project will be subject to best magic practices as well as all of the state, um, and national, uh, rules regarding, water quality, um, and construction management. Your, your question was also about the, the fish in the, the ocean? It's sludge. I don't have an answer on the sludge specifically tonight, um, but we can get back to you. Sure, uh, specif- specifically? Okay, can I, can we get your contact information tonight? Okay.
Um, any other questions from the audience? Angie?
Yeah, um, so once the approval processes and all that goes through, what's the timeline for the construction?
Meaning how long will construction take?
Yes.
See, um, I don't have an answer on that for you tonight. I don't know if anyone, any of my colleagues here in the audience. Approximately two years.
Thank you.
Um, uh, this is Arlene. I, I do have a question for you. I'm looking at your plans, and you have the open end. Does that mean the water flow is going to come from the ocean? It's going to carry through?
Yeah, could we pull up that slide again? You're talking about on the, um, Kai.
So that's going to be, is untreated water, it's going to be untreated ocean water? Uh, not this one. That one.
Courtney.
Yes, is it just going to be the pure ocean water? So it's going to be untreated ocean water?
So sorry, can you come up to the mic to answer the question and also state your name? Thank you so much.
I'm Courtney Himes with AECOM. Um, I'm an environmental planner with the designer for the project. Um, and yes, um, it would be a pile-supported structure with open water exchange between the ocean and what, what is considered a swim area or swim basin.
Now, that swim area is known to have box jellies, you know, every month. And then also, um, we have a, a lot of monk seals who give birth on that beach, come on a beach, and a lot of monk seals who are, seem to be visiting that beach on an almost daily basis now.
So, yeah, so there is the, the safety concern of people and marine lives swimming under the perimeter deck in and out of, of the pool area. And so it's not fully designed, but there will be a, a grate system, possibly fiberglass or metal, um, that would be, um, so the water would exchange freely, but it wouldn't allow for movement of, of, you know, people, animals, larger entities from getting underneath the deck at all. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, I was just wondering how you, if you look at buoy and ropes that are in the water, they collect a lot of, um, debris and dust. If you have a grate system, how do you prevent that?
So we, we acknowledge that it will likely have to be a removable system, something like, equivalent to like a dolphin pins that you've seen where they can potentially lift the, lift the structure, lift the braves out for cleaning and put them back. So it's not fully designed, but we, we acknowledge that in the marine environments, there's going to be a buildup of algae detritus, and it will be a maintenance challenge.
Okay, and then, like, one more question. Um, what about the consideration of sea rise? And built for that?
It was, it's being considered. There is a potential, sort of, maybe in the future, raise the deck, but altering it, it's not fully designed for that. Altering it right now would, um, make it not work with the, um, land-based portion and connect into, into it properly. It would be, uh, um, could have a flooding issue and not work. And so it's not, um, there's a potential to modify in the future the deck area for sea level rise. But, um, there, we're not attempting to demolish it, completely reconstruct the land-based portion to make it completely functional.
I see. Well, I know, um, if you've walked down the walkway there from the aquarium down towards Waikiki, there's a big collapsed area of the walkway there in front of the Barefoot Cafe. And I'm concerned about something like that happening to the rebuilt nautarium if, if issues like the king tides aren't taken into account in this, in this initial design.
So the new perimeter deck will be structured, will be completely reconstructed and structurally stable, um, on all new, on all new piles that are found in the common material. But, um, I will have to get back to you guys with a response regarding this, like, you know, concerns or any kind of structural injury or any, um, land-based portion.
Yeah, yes, because we are seeing, um, you know, if you walk there daily, you see what's happening to our, our walkways along at the coast here. Laura?
Yeah, whenever there's a full moon, we get the king tides, is what they're calling them now. In my lifetime, there were silver stairs that go into the ocean, and there was a little jetty that stuck out that was always above the water. Now it's almost always underwater. So that's just, you know, since the 1950s. And it's going to keep coming up. And this time of year, you see, if there's surf, it just hits that wall and goes 10 feet up in the air. And there's going to be erosion from that.
Yeah, no, wait, an issue, issue for lots of projects we're involved with everywhere.
Okay, I have more questions, but we have people online. So let's go to the online people. Um, let's go. Laura?
Um, yes, um, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, um, I am, um, first of all, I applaud the fact that your, um, uh, city and county offices or state offices, whatever they are, have gone through a full EIS. I recommend that for every single project, so I applaud you for having done that. But the main thing I wanted to ask in one of your early plot plans, it looked like there was an increase of parking, uh, area that is on the Diamond Head side. And I was wondering if you had actually contacted, and they should be real players in this, uh, the, the Diamond Head Conservancy, um, uh, organization. Um, uh, Jack Gilmar I know is on it, and I think others are too. And it would be really important that you have them included because if you're taking away any parkland, you always have to have corresponding other parkland that is a replacement for it. So.
I will verify if they've been, if they commented or involved in the EIS, but, sorry, hi. Um, I'll verify if they commented on the EIS and, and see what's needed and further consultation with them. But there's no additional parking being proposed as part of the project. And there's no, um, plan to take any additional parkland that isn't already in, in use as part of the War Memorial Facility.
Thank you.
All right, we also have, um, Margaret. Okay, Margaret and then Bruce.
Hi, I was just, I, I'm just wondering, if we can't fix the fire or the showers easily, what the heck are we doing trying to take on a major project like this? And do you have any idea of the cost of it? Because the showers were real expensive. Linda could probably weigh in on that. And it just feels like it's a real incomplete presentation.
Okay, um, the EIS, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, uh, I'm Haku Mills. I'm the Director for the Department of Design and Construction. I, I could sympathize, um, with the, the showers at Kaimana. Um, that, that was a project put on by DFM. It was a pilot project, right? Kind of seeing how it works and try to work out the kinks. Uh, it's not, it's not perfect, but I know that DFM is working hard to fix that. I think it's a bit unfair to compare, you know, showers, um, with an enormous renovation of a historic structure like this. Um, and so, you know, while I appreciate your, your frustration, uh, the city's doing what we can, uh, to fix those showers. Um, but i- if you have a question about, um, the presentation that we, that we provided, we're happy to, to take that question back if we can answer it now. Um, but this is the information that we have, and we hope, um, that the board can provide us some constructive.
Well, I think that, and so, excuse me for interrupting, but I think that you folks were the ones that designed the showers. And the workers down there, they know what's going on. And they said the whole thing was, was incorrect. You know, the filters were wrong, the pipe sizes were wrong, the flooring was wrong. And it's like, if you can't do something simple like that, and it costs us, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars, why should we trust you on this?
So I, I've said all I can about the, the showers. Um, I don't think I can.
Who is accountable for that? Is that you? I mean, who designed, who did the research on it?
Mark, it's a gentleman named, um, Gene Albano?
So yes, uh, Gene Albano is the Director of the Department of Facilities Maintenance. Um, while facilities maintenance was responsible, um, for this project. Um, I, I, as I mentioned before, this is a, this is a pilot project, right? Something had to be done, um, to, to correct that area. Um, and nothing is, is going to be perfect the first time you try it out. Um, like, I know it's, it's not ideal. I know that the city has been trying, um, still, still working things out. I heard on Ask the Mayor a couple of weeks ago that there are new, um, new parts that are coming in, uh, to replace items that are broken over there and other provisions that are being done. So, you know, unfortunately, I can't provide additional information on this project. It's not, not something within our department. I'm trying the best I can, but, um, happy to bring the topic back to the nautatorium.
Yeah, I would like to bring it back too. Um, is there anybody else that, I know Bruce has a question on the nautarium. Bruce?
Yes, um, wouldn't it make sense to refurbish the walls and basically turn it into a big sandbox and use it as a beach volleyball facility? It sounds like it would be cheaper to do it that way. And, and it's a needed, I mean, if any thought has been given to turning it into a beach volleyball facility. You got the bleachers and you got the walls, um, and to tear all those walls out and let the water flow through, I mean, you're going to have to do it all that, um, rebar and everything that's buried under there. That'll be dangerous for swimmers and, you know, I, I don't know if any thought has been given to something like that.
Yeah, my name is Clifford Law. I'm the Division Chief for the Facilities Division under Haku Mills for the Department of Design and Construction. Uh, I've been involved with this project for many, many years. Uh, I was structured here in private practice when the Department of Land and Natural Resources contracted us to come up, uh, you know, preparing EIS, come up with a plan to, uh, you know, rehabilitate, then address the water circulation issues, the deterioration of structure. So we did extensive investigations, testing of the concrete. We did, uh, did, uh, drilled deep borins to look at the foundation conditions. And one of our thoughts early on was to, um, basically, uh, like, under the deck, um, you know, just fill it all in, you know, so that we don't have to deal with, uh, you know, structures that are as vulnerable to deterioration. But what our technical engineers found was that the, uh, soil conditions under that entire site is a very soft, compressible layer. And just the weight of fill in the void spaces under the deck would cause two to three feet of settlement of the adjoining area, literally, uh, would actually destroy the entire bleacher structures and everything around it. So that was abandoned. That's why the concepts that we have right now are to drive deep foundations using piles to transfer the foundation forces of the structure, the weight of the structure down below the, uh, soft layer that occurs, uh, below the existing bottom conditions to prevent any kind of catastrophic settlement of the area, which would, uh, destroy the existing, uh, nautarium structure. The new structure. Yes, but I thank you for your thoughts. It was something that we did look into. We, we explored all, many, many different concepts trying to be able to rehabilitate and construct the, uh, a structure that will stand for the next generation. But we appreciate your question. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Michelle? You have a question?
Thank you. I would just like to commend this presentation, the direction of preservation for the nautarium. It is long overdue. I'm amazed to see that this, uh, quality and integrity is going to be retained and perpetuated for not only present, future generations, but future generations. Uh, regarding the history of this area, I, I can't support this more strong. Uh, regarding the history of this area, uh, I can't support this more strongly at this point. And I believe that our committee, planning and zoning, should write a resolution in strong support for this presentation. Uh, it's long overdue. There have been a lot of interfering, uh, proposals that would diminish and destroy the integrity of the site. It's time that we become responsible for our historic sites. And I don't know if the city has, uh, actually, uh, been a, a, a strong supporter of this. I don't see them doing anything else with historic preservation, such as the Aloe A Boathouse, which is in complete disrepair. And the roof has a white coating where it leaked, but that's another historic site. And I hope ACOM can step in on that one as well. I just, I am so elated to see this presentation and the direction this, this is going in. Um, and it may be very personal. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but my ancestor, William G. Irwin, was the architect of the Capilani Park Trust. I'm a collateral descendant and this was his property when he traded much of the peripheral property to complete the park. And then his family, um, sold it to the four territories for the purpose of the nadatorium. There is so much history behind this. And, um, we'll go into this later, but thank you so much. This is, this is absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there, do we have any other, um, questions from the people online? Okay, we have another person in person? Yes.
My name's Bill, uh, Bill Johnson. Uh, so I'm in the neighborhood, but I'm also at the aquarium. I had a question for the engineer people. Um, has there been any fluid dynamic studies if you're opening the side of, uh, great motion in the pool, but also on the, to surrounding area?
All right, can you use the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking for a fluid dynamic, uh, studies of how the pool and opening of the sides will affect the, not only the motion and exchange in the pool, but also on the beach side and towards the aquarium as well. And if that would be available, if you have it. His asking, yeah, his was more about the sludge when during construction in what's there. Mine is more just the actual flow of the water, fluid dynamic study, looking at how it moves through the grading, through the pool, and also how that would affect neighboring beach. And if you haven't done it, if you didn't want, would it be available to public? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clifford Law with the Department of Design and Construction, but let me kind of answer, um, when we designed the previous project, which was, uh, designed to take advantage of the natural processes that occur along this shoreline, uh, to provide sufficient water and, uh, exchange of ocean, clean ocean water with the interior. Uh, we designed openings on the Eva side seawall. And then we designed openings on the Diamondhead side, uh, interval with a pathway opening on the, uh, Diamondhead Mackay corner. And what we found was that, uh, just by doing those limited openings, there was sufficient, uh, natural water circulation, uh, in fact, almost all the time. It's, uh, that you would find that to be sufficient for, to provide, uh, three to four exchanges of, of water volume within the pool, uh, to provide adequate. Be as good as the outside water quality. We have not done for this particular design, which actually with opening the entire wall, we anticipate that it will even have greater, uh, water flow because it'll be unrestricted at this point. It'll be unrestricted and you will see the natural current and circulation flowing through. Right now, water flows from the Eva direction, Diamondhead, along that shoreline and hits the wall of the nadatorium and is forced around the perimeter of the nadatorium, going out through the deep channel. And that is almost all the time, whether it's a rising tide or falling tide. You see that that's been measured in studies, which we took advantage of in trying to come up with, uh, circulation. So to answer the question, uh, circulation pattern, we anticipate you would find similar, uh, water, uh, circulation patterns that you currently see that's in front of the aquarium. It would just pass right through the nadatorium, then come out and head out to the same point that it's, uh, discharging right now. So there should actually, it'd be, that's why we call it, it would be a natural beach environment that we would be creating. So that, um, you know, water circulation, water quality, um, because it isn't subject to the saltwater pools, we have not actually, uh, been asked to, uh, do any, uh, kind of analysis or modeling. But I can say under the past studies, you will see the similar pattern, but even more free exchange of water from the interior and exterior of the nadatorium with this project.
So, uh, this is Arlene Velasco. I have a, just a quick follow-up question. So is the bottom going to be natural seafloor?
Uh, yes. One of the things to minimize any impact on the environment, the removal of the sand that's been blown in from the Kaimana Beach for the removal. Uh, we anticipate minimal or no disturbance of the other remaining bottom within the swimming area right now as it exists. So any, uh, natural organism there is, and we, we have done, uh, I guess marine life surveys, corals, and then there may be some, uh, relocation. I'm not sure. I haven't seen the report. There have been some, some small, uh, coral, uh, colonies within, but within, I think that's going to be in our discussions with the federal people on addressing that. But we plan to do minimum disturbance within the swimming area bottom. We will focus on reconstructing of the, of the structure so that we'll provide a long-term stable facility that will require as minimal maintenance as possible that, that people can enjoy for a long time.
Great, thank you very much. Is, do we have any other questions?
Yes, I, I've been had my hand up this whole time.
Okay, Linda?
Thank you. Um, I, I admire you for, um, all taking on the task because this is the same plan that failed last time. There was so much controversy and people that didn't brought out things why it wouldn't work, uh, that they finally dropped it. And it did have more parking, 210, uh, stalls. Um, I, when I was chair, I talked to the, um, uh, the, oh, who was it? The, uh, oh, the civil, uh, defense people and they spent one afternoon, civil engineers, they spent one whole afternoon telling me why it won't work. They said that, um, every brick you take down from the nadatorium facade, you have to make a mold to make another brick. And then, um, the, uh, costs will be just, I just, I just can't see all the, if it would work, fine. But there's also the Department of Health ruling that a, uh, uh, lifeguard has to be able to see, uh, six feet and they didn't, uh, think that would work because that sludge that's in there has been in there since Duke Hanamoko's time. That sludge will fill out, uh, fall out into Kaimana Beach and it, it's, uh, that's a major thing. Um, there's two, supposed to be 260 people you have to notify when you do anything that has anything to do with, uh, the beach there, anything, uh, Diamond Head. Um, the, there's a lot, the, also those stakes that you plan to put into, I know the plan. If, if you, those metals sharp things that you're going to put in the bottom, uh, to do whatever, um, that, that's a, uh, hazard of little kids. If they get their heads stuck in there, they're, they're going to die like they did at the Hilton Beach, the lagoon. Um, there's, uh, fiberglass in the metal. There's, um, the, the sea level ride cannot tolerate what's going on. The, you know, I admire you for trying to do this, but the, all the things that we asked to mitigate on the last EIS were never solved. I understand that you're coming up with a different slide, uh, to it, but let me tell you, I don't think, uh, you're going to be able to get through all these problems that you don't even know all of them. That, you know, every five years we had another meeting about the nadatorium and it ended with Walt Disney coming in and wanting to buy the whole thing. It's, it's just, uh, 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 so large of a, of a process and a thing to take on. I, I wish you could, but I, after studying it for all these years, I, I don't believe it's possible.
Linda?
Yeah.
We're running short on time, so it's, if you want to make a closing statement?
No, I wish it was possible. I really do. But with all the years of people coming forward and laying the card on the table when we had these meetings since movies time, uh, I just can't see you, um, it's like a insurmountable, uh, I can just imagine the money and time, you know, the cost overruns, the da, 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 da.
Yeah, well.
Luck.
Um, that, Amanda wants, it wants to say something. So let's, uh, if we can move on, Linda, what, we can come up, I think, do you want to have a, a, a subcommittee meeting on this? This is a big issue, maybe we should, under the, our Parks and Recreation.
The whole island's going to want to know.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's going to take a lot.
Yeah. I'll reach.
Investigation into this. But thank you very much for your presentation. We have a question from Amanda or, or input.
Hello, uh, Mr. Lau, uh, Director Mielis and, uh, Mr. Furia. I have two quick questions. Um, thank you for being here this evening. May we please get a copy of the presentation? Is that possible? Can you send it to us? And, um, I wanted to know if you can give us a little bit more information about the funding. I believe I recall seeing a number of, an estimated cost for the whole project in the range of about $50 million. And I just, I know the city kicked in some money and I believe there's supposed to be some sort of a public-private partnership. So can you tell us a little bit more about the funding side?
Well, to answer your question about slides first, uh, Camelia, I believe the slides we provided to you are available online, right?
Um, so the slide is on the neighborhood boards, um, Google Drive. It's open.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind please sending it to City Council Chair Waters' office? We'd appreciate it.
We can definitely do that. Um, and as far as funding, I'm going to let Haku attempt to answer that question.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, Haku Mills, Director for Department of Design and Construction. So regarding the funding, um, as you mentioned, um, you heard some estimates, 40 million, 50 million. Uh, we don't have a, an actual, um, number just yet. We're still working through the design. Um, and once we, once we get closer to finalizing, we'll be able to hone in that number, uh, a lot better. Um, you mentioned the, that you've heard of a public-private partnership. Uh, we are working, uh, with the community, um, and, and some interesting, interested parties, um, on, on fundraising and then figuring out, um, options, um, for the future and how we will, uh, look towards funding the construction of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Online? Nope. Anybody else in? Oh, we have Laura. Go ahead.
Um, one more question, and I didn't see it addressed, but there are nice bathrooms and showers, so you're going to keep those pretty much the same? Yeah. Because the beachgoers will really appreciate that.
The showers and bathrooms where we're mainly.
Okay, great. But I assume they'll be upgraded. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one more person. Tina?
Sorry, my name is Tina Grandinetti. I live in Kaukulu. Um, I think I'm, might have missed it in the presentation, but can you share? So you said there's, it was, construction would take two years. Any timeline for how long it would take to get to the point of construction from now? And also are there any opportunities for like public input or community involvement?
Good, Tina.
Clifford again. Um, I guess the question in terms of timeline right now. Right now we're working with ACOM to refine and actually get some, uh, finished working drawings. Uh, there's a lot of details that we have to work off. We're anticipating in about, uh, maybe a little over a year, maybe at the stage of, uh, you know, maybe 90% of design plans. Then we'll be able to get a refined cost estimate. At the same time, we are, this is actually part of the process. We're starting for the special management area permit. And when, there will be public participation, uh, the Department of Planning Permit will be conducted in a public hearing after they've done their review of our, our application. And there will be public hearings at the city council when this, uh, permit goes forth there. And like, I think, uh, the, the ACOM mentioned earlier, we have the 106 process. There will be meetings with, uh, interested parties. Uh, you know, there's quite a number of permits. I anticipate, um, from my past experience, I anticipate about two years to, uh, go through all the processes. So at the earliest, I think we're talking, you know, several years away before we have the plans and have the permits in place, be able to, before we can actually go out to, um, uh, get a contractor and also subject to our, um, you know, obtaining the necessary finances for the construction. Is that enough? Answer your question.
No. Tina? All right, Angie?
Sorry, I have one last question. I'm so sorry. Um, just because I think we've all have witnessed different projects when it comes to, once we try to find the estimate for the cost and then we start and then it kind of adds on. Um, so sorry to ask this, but I just feel like we have to ask this. Um, whenever we get to the spot where we do have the design plans or we do have the funding in place, will all of the funding be in place when the construction starts or will it be kind of in phases? Does that kind of make sense? I know it's a fun little question.
I mean, it's, it's a good question. Uh, unfortunately, right now, I, I can't make any commitment one way or the other. It's, it's just too early right now. Thanks.
Yeah, and there's inflation and everything else. So it'd be really hard to estimate, right? The final cost would be. Okay, so now I, I think we're, are we done with this question and answer on the presentation? Thank you very much for coming. Thank your team. Really appreciate it. This is a, yeah. It would be nice to have that thing not falling down into the water.
Vice Chair Velasco?
Yes.
Uh, I'd just like to add that the Planning and Zoning Committee, since this isn't a special management area permit, needs to be included in this conversation. Uh, there are many interested, uh, people who would be able to contribute to this dialogue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I was thinking it would fall under Parks and Rec, but it doesn't. It, you know, if it's planning and zoning, let's do, put it there.
Uh, Chair, I'd just like.
We could actually have a joint committee meeting, uh, include more people.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be an excellent idea. Um, and Linda, did you want to add to that?
Thank you. I think most important is, uh, we don't want you to come visit us every year. We want it to be more often than that. I think you owe the public that and they will look forward to, everybody wants to know about the nadatorium for years. So please visit us more than once a year.
And we, we, trust me, we will contact you as well. We're, we're all concerned about the, you know, the wildlife there. I, you know, I follow the monk seals and there's a lot of considerations that we, we just want to make sure every, we all are happy with what we, the end product. I know you got, you're, have the best interest at heart. Thank you. Okay, so now I think we can go to our elected officials report and now we've added the mayor back to the agenda. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Anton Kruckey, Department of, of Community Services. Um, it, it's, uh, August, um, Mayor's Newsletter has come out and kind of highlighted in there are, um, there's a story on, on, uh, some of the things that we're doing to address and kinda highlighted in there are, um, there's a story on, on, uh, some of the things that we're doing to address the homeless population and, and, uh, there's a picture on the front of Waikiki Vista, um, from your area and talks about some of the other projects we do, we're doing. And I think that, you know, our, our strategy's there, since I'm very involved in it, is, is all about beds. And we need beds of many flavors and we expect to add, you know, a thousand bed usages in just from this past January to the next January. So, um, there's a, there's a lot going on in that area. I, I could talk about it at another meeting if you like. The, uh, we also, you know, the lifeguard that, that, uh, that we lost, Perry, he would, he's remembered in the, in the newsletter. Um, we have a new acting director for Ocean Safety Department that's been approved, so he, a little bit about him in there. You may have seen in Waikiki, the new trash cans that have been installed, so there's an article about that you can read about. And there's an article about, uh, the Gandhi statue near the zoo, uh, its renovation. So there's a lot actually that touches this neighborhood board that's, that's in this version. You can, you can go online and check it out at the, uh, W W eight Honolulu Gov Mayor Newsletter. They also wanna, wanna inform you about the Fire Department Response Mapping. I know we, in some of our meetings, we've had concerns about that and, 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 uh, we talk about the responses and you can, uh, you can go online at W W W response mapping dot com and, uh, look at incidences and learn more about them. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's interesting to do, I've done that, um, so it's a learning experience. Okay, so in terms of answering questions before I get any, any feedback, uh, all of the questions kinda consistent with, um, with the conversations earlier, uh, went to D T S, Department of Transportation Services. But I, I will say that, um, in general, um, you know, a lot of these processes, you, you have these consequences that if you, if you just do something here and do something there. And so I, I think that the, the board might wanna even think, that this neighborhood board might wanna think about some sort of consolidated response of your recommendations to D C S, so they're not just answering your questions, but they're, they're looking at all these speed bumps that you have in mind, uh, and, and other issues, because they, 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 they're a consolidated thing that has to happen. I will tell you, I have learned about speed bumps in the neighbor, in the, in the town halls that, you know, they, they do very, they're very good at controlling traffic. They're also very loud, so the people that live by them, uh, there's a lot of noise that's involved with them, so it's also something to consider. Um, and I, and I think you saw before the council is a, is a resolution that's actually gonna look at lowering speed ramp limits around schools and other places like that, and it does work, lower speed limits do work. Not that everybody obeys them, but it, it does make a difference, so. Anyway, in, in terms of particular questions that you had, Date Street and Kapahulu Avenue intersection, right turn on red light. It was requested for the D T S to install a no right turn on red, on red sign at the intersection of Date Street going on to Kapahulu. And, um, and, you know, the whole concept of it being difficult because, uh, because cars are turning and, and the construct, and the intersection there. And the D T S responses, they're still conducting its investigation and it requires a site inspection, traffic survey and review of the traffic collision history and will take appropriate action as is warranted on their analysis. Um, D T S will inform the board on their findings of this study at the end of January twenty five is when they expect to do that. But as was mentioned earlier, um, you know, uh, the chair, the neighborhood board chair did do a walk with D C S along Kapahulu and, and, and discussed them, I know Chair Welsh isn't, Welsh isn't there tonight, but, um, but he can inform the board on some of those. The second one was pedestrian crosswalk safety concern, it was requested to D T S to assess and improve the pedestrian safety, uh, safety at the intersection of Wailei Avenue and Fourth Avenue, fronting the Red Elephant Thai Cuisine Restaurant. And again, the D T S is currently working on a request for federal funding for improvements at the uncontrolled crosswalk at Wailei and Fourth Avenues. Improvements will include a quick build pedestrian refuge island and a pedestrian activated rectangular rapid flashing beacon, an R R F B. If awarded, construction is expected to commence in mid two thousand twenty six. Um, so some of these things you touched on in your earlier conversations. Um, a follow-up on the removed crosswalk at Kapahulu Avenue, the board would like a follow-up on the mayor addressing the removed uh, crosswalk at Kapahulu Avenue fronting Rainbow Drive-In. Um, this was called into the, uh, Ask the Mayor show and, and, and they talked about it. Um, you know, in the first time we, we talked about this in the board meeting, it was like, it's, it's really, you know, light is deteriorating and, and it needs to be upgraded and really it's been removed on purpose, right? So the official response is the, um, the city is recommending installing a raised median and a pedestrian activated rectangular rapid flashing beacon that are R F B at this location, uh, so they're, they're, um, they're looking at doing that. As an interim, the city recognizes that it may be inconvenient that the, to the community and D T S recommends pedestrians use the nearby sig, signalized crosswalks at Campbell Avenue or at the Alaway Golf Course intersection. So, um, that was their response on that. D T S also another question, uh, that they want a representative at future meetings and, um, what, like I said, D T S met with, with, uh, Mr. Winston Welsh on Friday, June fourteenth, and they walked along Kapahulu Avenue discussing the board's safety concerns. At this point in time, they weren't gonna attend this meeting, um, so they're not, they're not here today. Um, but again, you know, at, at the right time, if we can put these things together, I can always request another director to come and, and address them in particular. But I'd like to formulate a, a, you know, a response sheet that they, they would go down, so it'd be worth their time, not to just come and randomly take input, uh, on, on subjects. If we do that, I'd be glad to, uh, to solicit their attendance. Um, there was a request for, uh, for a quicker notification, more notification of bus route changes. And so, um, here's the activities that they've had, the, the bus service changes effectively as of June eighteenth. So they started in, in mid-June with some of these changes that they were concerned about, uh, and they, they wanna go to the neighborhood boards. And then on June seventeenth, what they do is they put up notices at each bus stop that's being affected so the people riding that area can see those notices. And then people can always, uh, look on, on W W W thebus.org to, uh, see all the notices that are there and can contact, uh, D T S directly through there to, uh, to talk about, uh, about those changes. They're constantly changing bus routes based on ridership and, and availability and, and input, so I would, I would suggest that you do that. So those are the answers to the questions that were submitted from the last meeting, I apologize, I wasn't here, I was on vacation. Um, but I'm glad to be here tonight and, and take your, your comments and, and concerns, so thank you, Vice Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Um, we will take questions now at this time from the people in-house. And I see Angie, the question?
Thank you, Director Kruckey for coming, um, I have three questions, but I think I'll just, I don't wanna go through all of them at the exact same time. But the first one was, you keep referencing Ask the Mayor Show, which one is that and when is that?
Okay, that's, that's, uh, the Rick Hamada Show and it's on Wednesday mornings at, uh, seven, I think that he actually gets on at seven ten. So it's every Wednesday.
Okay.
Eight thirty, eight thirty A M is the dial.
An A M radio show, Rick Hamada.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's what I had assumed, but I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and then I had another follow-up on the crosswalks that get blacked out. Has the city considered putting up signs saying that there's no longer a crosswalk there or please do not cross? And they moved them, I mean?
I, yeah, let me, let me, let me ask D T S on that.
Okay, thank you, and then I have one really tangent, um, I was curious about this. Whenever there's a new, um, different sites that are opening up for like homeless shelters and affordable housing and those that are kinda, are not affordable housing, transitional housing, how do they get named? This is a tangent.
That's, that's a great question, because we, we, this, if you look at that Mayor's Newsletter, there's a description of a, of a new medical respite that we opened up on North King Street. It was formerly the First Wine Bank Building and, um, we went through a process of, of talking about names. If you're, if you're gonna go with a Hawaiian name, it's, it gets pretty complicated, right? There's a lot of people to discuss with it and interpretations and everything else. But we also wanna, uh, name them so that you know where they are. So people, we had all these names come up, but it was just a solicitation of like people in the city, anybody you had, go talk, come up with some names. So we didn't have like a formal process, um, but the, we ended up calling this one the Aala Respite. And, um, just for information, the way that one's gonna work, it's not fully operational yet. There's fences up because we were getting a lot of folks there and we were putting in units, so, um, it's a temporary fence. It'll be a nice fence once we finish, but it's only a temporary building, because we bought that building because rail's gonna come through there. But we're gonna be able to have, you know, thirty beds inside that are medical respite, that eventually will be twenty-four by seven. Right now, it's not, they're not fully staffed yet, so we're just getting started. But medical respite is where you could take somebody from the street and, and they have time to heal. Where normally they were going into Queens and then going right back out in the street a day later. And so now they can have, you know, they can have a month or something to heal while they're there. But we've also installed around the building these small little tiny homes and we have portable, uh, toilets and showers. So we're also gonna have thirty homes there for homeless, so, so that complex will have sixty folks, you know, it's being run by a medical team. And, um, and it's just one of those thousand units that I talked about that are gonna be put in play.
Right, oh, sorry, I just wanted to say thank you, yeah, cuz I assume you know of the confusion of one of the names that I might be referencing, but the one for the Waikiki Vista's name, I believe I saw it on Instagram was the Halei Emiola. And that's kind of close to another existing name.
I, 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 I don't know of it being renamed at this point. You know, we were, Waikiki Vista, because that's what it was named for.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's, that's being real successful, by the way.
Oh, sorry, I think I meant the To Dai Tokai one, is that?
What's that?
Not Waikiki Vista.
Tokai.
The Tokai building, that one was the Halei Emiola, that was the one.
Uh, that, when, when they had it, yeah.
Okay.
We have, we're, we're talking about naming that one, uh, if you wanna send me, uh, you know, names that you'd like to recommend, I'm always willing to raise them up the flagpole.
Um, I, I have, this is Arlene, I, I have a quick question regarding the homeless situation, um, and finding them homes. There's a couple people, uh, yeah, uh, older women that camp out along Oakway, and is there any way to get someone over there to, to talk to them and, and see whether, if they can find a, a spot for them somewhere? They have to be, you know, seventy or eighty.
Uh, that's, that's, yeah, that's all, that, that's pretty hard on them. Um, you can call eight oh eight seven six eight core, C O R E. And they can send their truck over there and have people talk to them. Uh, one of the shelters, I'm trying to get started up by the end of, of, uh, of, uh, August into September, one of the cohorts will be for, um, Senior Kapuna. So we're gonna open up, the, we're gonna open up about a hundred beds in, in Evil A Center, which is an old big warehouse. Uh, again, we bought that building for rail, so it's only gonna be for three years, but, so I'm gonna put a, a hundred-bed shelter, which is really four different shelters, and one of them is gonna be, uh, for Kapuna. So anyway, seven six eight core, C O R E.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then, is there any more questions in-house? If not, let's go to the, um, online people. And we have, uh, Linda, you have a question?
Just one, thank you very much, you give us a lot of good information, I really appreciate it. Um, do you ever foresee us returning back to when the city will follow D P P's rules?
Well, I'm not, Linda, I'm not exactly sure what you mean, but mean by that question.
The, the, because the governor said we're in an emergency situation, cuz there's not enough housing. All the rules that, uh, Department of Planning Permitting are gone, so.
So that, yeah, the emergency proclamation, that's, that's a great question, because it brings up the ability to explain it. The emergency proclamation allows you to, uh, really do things like affect, uh, the solicitation process and the selection process, so you can move forward. But in the end, so the, so the, that can be picked, those people can be picked and directed and, and funded. But in terms of your D P P part, they have to eventually meet all D P P requirements, those are not waived, right? And federal, federal, uh, rules are not waived under the emergency proclamation. So, but the emergency proclamation lets you get started and, and, you know, so you can take action, you don't have to go through long solicitations. You know, you still are gonna be audited on what you do and, and, and you have to meet the D P P requirements eventually. You may not have to, to, to move the first person in, but there has to be a road to meet the standards that, that they have.
Does that include height, height limits?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good to hear, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and next we have Laura.
Um, yes, hi, um, hi, Anton.
Hi, Laura.
Laura Braby, I'm actually, uh, a resident of the larger area, but Mo Ela Eli is my home, but my main concern is today, and there's some minor ones too, that I am very concerned that the D T S has not responded to any community written responses that they made regarding the, um, uh, unfortunate proposal of a bridge over the canal. And I mean, people have been very, very thoughtful in putting these written responses and giving them to them. And this is a period of not only twenty twenty-three, but back to twenty twenty-one and even some back to twenty fifteen. So this has been, it's sort of, uh, uh, I hate to say it, it's sort of a planned way of acting that the D T S one oh one is, don't answer the community, but keep having the town halls and eventually everybody fatigue. And I don't think fatiguing is the way that, um, a community, um, should, um, be handled or that the mayor as, as our main community representative, you have to do something. Uh, wait a second, I'm, I'm still speaking, okay? And so, um, uh, just today, we hear that the, um, Nata Torium has a, an E I S. I have asked for many, many times for the D T S to do a full E I S on our historical canal, promenade and park and, uh, the adjacent school, also Alaway School. And they have completely, they have just dismissed that. And yet, here are other places where a, an E I S is understood and it needs to be done so that people can understand the, the statutes, the, um, ordinances, the laws that all are, um, um, appropriate to those that, that particular site and is a site. And, um, and so, um, uh, other people mentioned today too about the Nata Torium, you know, being capable of historic sites and that's it too. Also, the mayor said out loud that he was very concerned about Alaway Traffic, uh, Boulevard constriction. If the, if there's a, a lane that's taken away and just tonight, we heard about the big, um, uh, traffic problem that's gonna occur with three events in Waikiki. So those are, those are really, the real main concerns is that there's, they're just not responding in any concrete way to all, to the various people that have made very thoughtful, concerned, um, proposals to the D T S. And I might say in parenthesis, three of the neighborhood boards have said they do not, they would wanna have a full E I S. And also, over seven hundred people have petition, on petitions, have said that they really don't want any bridge over there at all. So that's, that's quite a number of people, um, considering. Um, now, I'll let you respond, but I just have a, a couple of other things you could just take back. First of all, the, the Tokai University site is completely, uh, not understood by people over our side of the canal. Waikiki Vista is just means, look, looking at the, at Waikiki. But it's, I can't tell you where you are in the neighborhood, you might consider that. And second, very quickly, uh, Kahuna Lane had a big, um, ditch for a long, a number of, uh, weeks. And I think they were putting in a, um, a new sewer line, I'm not sure, but that has to do with overbuilding, you know, big, um, projects that, um, I don't know, checkerboard building at the corner of University and King, but overbuilding and then having to do retrofitting for our infrastructure. So I asked for the Kulei Place, I asked, could they do the studies before it gets all the way to the D P, uh, D P P? And they said no, but I think that that's a really likely, um, uh, solution is to do all those things beforehand. Uh, the Kapialani is just getting repaved and why do they wanna have it torn up again for something that could be a big sewer or water project coming down the line? Um, anyway, but my main concerns are with D T S and they're not being responsive for anything that has to do with a proposed, uh, bridge over the canal. So I don't know if you can respond now, but would you please go back to the mayor and have a real heart-to-heart conversation with him about our community concerns, about how we interface between, we'll work with whoever it is. But they're not allowing us to work with them in any particular way, the community. So thank you for my comments, yeah.
Yeah, Laura, uh, you know, I read all your emails on those, so I, I've been kept up to speed on them. Um, I'll, I'll make a special point to discuss this in the Managing Director's Office. Uh, you know, about your concerns and, and about, not just the, the issues in particular, but the, getting the feedback and interaction that you're looking for. Um, you know, it's, it's, if you saw the city system, we have a, a very sophisticated system of knowing where every sewer line is, the electrical lines, the gas lines. You know, it's it's if you saw the city system, we have a a very sophisticated system of knowing where every sewer line is, the electrical lines, the gas lines. And we we not only can tell you where everything is, we could tell you where they used to be. And and it's it's a pretty reactive system. It's not going through old plans or anything. It's all, you know, right there for you. So I'm surprised that, you know, some of these things come up for different reasons. I mean, you may make an assumption that somebody didn't plan. I don't know who who said that, but there may have been planning, but something else may have come up. And so, you know, you have to watch, you don't jump to a conclusion on what the reason was that they were doing it. We do have all of the those those things mapped out for the for the whole county. So anyway, I will take those things forward. You talked about Waikiki Vista. You know, I've I've been, you know, I've spent hours talking to communities about it. So if I, you know, if somebody complains they didn't hear it or they didn't do it, you know, I'll try again really quickly. You know, the the building was acquired by the city. And when we acquired it by the city, we wanted to address what we call workforce housing. And so we part of the floors are set up for workforce housing, and we know that that's the case because we also rent the stalls. And and only about twenty percent of the people that live in the sections for workforce housing rent stalls. So they're being able to walk or take the bus into into work, which is important to do in that area. The building also is the home of the new of the band. So it's the new home. The band's never really had an office and a home. And eventually they'll they'll set up a little kind of a museum area in there where they can, because they have a very rich history um in on our island. And and people will be able to see that history, which I think will be really good. And then we have four floors that are um dedicated to um to a process that will help folks on the street. And it's family shelters because we have these other activities that are going to other places. So we have a strategy of of we're bringing up three new family shelters uh around the island, Waikiki Vista, one in Haula and one in Wahihua. And so this is really a a method that hasn't been done before. So the first floor of this group is all run by Catholic charities. And the first floor of this group are people that we taking right off the street and you're trying to stabilize them and get ready. Then they're able to graduate to the next three floors for supportive housing in in those in those rooms, right? And so we we've been able to create um forty-four spaces, forty-four potential spaces for families, right? We already, you know, we already have families in there. They're recovering. Two of the families have already gone from that process into permanent supportive housing somewhere else. So it's been a a very productive thing, and we've only been in there since June, right? And so that's that's pretty amazing in terms of shelter. So we added a a processing technology by that one floor, but giving Catholic charities the the options then to work with people while still leaving openings for them to uh get people off the street from the whole network of of family references that they have and homeless. So that's what's going on there. We still have the uh, the church is still in there. Um, we don't know if they're going to stay or or we're going to have them go. They they need a location that works for them. Uh, so we're trying to work with them, but those are the three things. There's also a kitchen and we're looking at maybe a group that might uh run a kitchen that could be a service to the community as well. So that's what's going on at Waikiki Vista.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of it. Just the naming that it confuses people because it's not in Waikiki. And if Waikiki Vista means I think you're looking at Waikiki, but it might be something where you choose something where people can recognize where it is. That's all I'm saying is it's confusion in the community right now, but I support everything that's going on there.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what we talked about. Uh, so you're spot on, Laura, and we'll probably get to that. You know, we have to figure it out. Naming is an interesting animal. Right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We have another question from Daisy.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Hi, Director. Thank you for coming and answering a lot of questions. And thank the department for picking up the blue trash bin that was left on Thursday, not this week, not today, but a couple of weeks ago on Sunday. We appreciate them working overtime. And I noticed today when they picked up the blue trash bin, that particular um truck was having a little bit engine or power or gear shift uh problem. So I think that might be one of the reasons why you don't have enough trucks to service the island. So um I think there really needs to be overwhelmed or really seriously considered because if they merit things, they're going to start getting more affordable housing units. They won't be able to service the people that have um garbage pickup. So those are very um important things to do. And also regarding the um, have you had a chance to talk to D T S regarding the CO2 poisoning incident? Someone that knows the people that were involved are still not back at work. So it seems to be a serious health problem issue with those that were affected. And third, regarding the city's changes to the bus routes, not everyone has the notification. I don't see it on the um bus stops over in Waikiki, especially down by the Hilton, Ilikai, Discovery Bay. The one at Waikiki, I know Waikiki, I'm sorry, Alamana Center is at eye level if you're sitting down. So tourists don't know that there'll be no bus twenty-three going back to Waikiki because it'll be too low for them to see. So you have to really go back in and for that because a lot of tourists have no idea there'll be no bus twenty-three taking them back to Waikiki unless they go to Kapilani Boulevard or Alamana Boulevard. And also, how would the tourists know how to get from Waikiki and Hilton or Ilikai to Silai Park? To get, they need to transfer two times to get to Silai Park. Uh, the thing is not only them, but it's the school kids that live in our area and go to Kalani High School. Now they will have to take a bus number two to get to Kalahala Mall to catch a twenty-three just to go to school. So these are things that I think that the D T S really needs to go back or don't do it because it seems to be um done hurriedly without thinking because a lot of students will be confused and they will have to take another bus just to go to school. When currently now they just take one bus twenty-three to take them back to Kalani High School and back. The tourists coming back from that side coming say they can't go back to Waikiki. They would have to transfer twice to get back to Waikiki because they're going to be dropped off at Kalahala Mall. So a lot of things really were not well thought of. So these are concerns. So I appreciate if D T S could really, really do more um community service to let people know what's happening because a lot of people have no clue going on. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, first off about the trash trucks, Daisy, that you're absolutely correct. During the pandemic, we've had many of our uh orders canceled and we've been struggling hard to keep up uh because of that. So your comment is true. We just received two that that came to the island uh in last month, and we have four more coming before the end of the year. And and that's only part of our orders. Um, it's just hard to get those kind of specialized equipment. And those two that came in in July, they're getting all licensed up and everything else and will be, you know, active this month. But you're absolutely right on the trash trucks and and all the things you you said, and we're working on it, but we do have some coming in. Um, I think the I reported on the CO2 problem in the bus was kind of a uh not everywhere. It was uh isolated. But I didn't know that that there were uh long-on problems with some of the individuals. I'll check on that. And, you know, how how much you notice and 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 such on the bus routes. Believe me, a lot of thoughts go into the changes in the bus routes. It's a it's a process that does that. Doesn't mean that you don't do something and there's an unintended consequence, um, but it's not thoughtless, right? There's a lot of work that goes into that, but I wrote down all of what you said, Daisy, and I'll I will report that to them. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I appreciate it because the bus has very, very, very major changes. And a lot of people are unaware of the changes which are happening within with about two weeks from now or maybe a week and a half. So, you know, a lot of things need to really be considered and they need to really think it over, maybe change uh doing some of these um changes to later on because it should be done in phases. There's too much to learn, too much to.
All right, yeah, uh, we're we're down to an hour. So let's um move on to Michelle. You have a question?
Yes, Vice Chair. I've been waiting quite a while and uh I want to address five items here as a board member uh online. And first of all, I would like to commend Director Kruckey. I really appreciate everything he is doing. The uh I agree that we need to have collective meetings on priority issues with the administration as a board because all of this uh back and forth and independent silo communication uh just is overwhelming. So if we can consolidate, organize and meet with the city, especially for Kruckey as our representative for the administration, I think his idea is excellent. The first issue is the fire reports. Uh, Director Kruckey, I don't know if you really realize that Diamond Head is inhabited by transient encampments of which the inhabitants refuse service. They simply wait for house cleaning services from the state and the city on the roadside, and then they move right back up there. Meanwhile, they're cutting Kiavi limbs, building campfires. And we have heard the fire department respond innumerable times along Diamond Head Road. We have photographs, we have records of fire department responding to these wildfires and open fires and campfires, whatever they're called, nuisance fires. Uh, we're not getting reports from the fire department. We did get a comprehensive chart from February through April, which showed there were four of these fires. We have requested ever since monthly reports. They have not given it us the charts that we have requested with the locations and the dates. And they have uh just referred us to about website that is inadequate for this purpose. Hopefully you are able to communicate with the fire department chief or the fire chief on this matter. Regarding the speed bumps, speed humps and crosswalks, we had meetings with um uh Director Roger Morton, an excellent meeting uh with his staff regarding Diamond Head Road and the hazards along Diamond Head Road. There have been many fatalities, bicyclists, pedestrians. Nothing's been done. The crosswalks are absolutely nonexistent. And nobody wants speed bumps, but speed humps have been recommended. Ever since our meeting with Roger Morton, uh, we've received information that oh, there's no need for anything, but maybe we'll look into something around Coconut Avenue. This is unacceptable when you have fatalities, accidents and speeders in the middle of the night going around the blind turns. And there have been accidents with teenagers running into private properties. It's all on record. It's all been on the news. We've got to do something about this. And crosswalks are essential because there are so many pedestrians going back and forth between Mukali Beach Park and Leahy Beach Park and all the residential areas along Diamond Head Road. The next thing is the Royal Hawaiian Band. They have always been in Kapilani Park. They're a historic element in the park. They started on McKee Island before the Honolulu Zoo was developed. And why they are being moved to a commercial building or some structure away from the historic site is highly questionable. Uh, the next thing and final thing is the trash trucks. Are the new trash trucks going to be pollution-free? Are we going to have hybrid or electric trash trucks instead of these gas-guzzling diesel engines running up and down our neighborhood streets? It's the same thing as uh the weed whackers and the uh blowers that they use that are gas-propelled. We've got to get into clean energy. Thank you.
First, you know, I I will take all those things. Uh, we 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 have been meeting, by the way, on Diamond Head and the with both the state and the city and what to do about that. I I'm in total agreement on the on the potential dangers there. And on the um Royal Hawaiian Band, that they they weren't moved, they requested it. They came to us and asked for this. So um this is by their request that they wanted to move there. They they didn't really have a situation where they could store their equipment well and 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 do the amount of things that they do. So um I'll get back to you on the trash trucks and the environmental piece. So thank you for your comments, Michelle.
Okay, um, do we, Linda, do you have a a quick question? We we need to go on to the uh Benals to, we need to go finish up with our city officials and state officials. So Linda? Your mic is off. Okay, um, when Linda's mic gets back on, we.
I don't I don't have my hand up. I don't have a question. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, great. Um, all right, then I think we are done with Anton. Are you have a lot on your plate now?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your input and I.
Well, thank you so much.
Good notes. You bet. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you. And um, do we have anybody from Representative and Case Office? Nobody. How about send? Hello? Okay, anybody from the Senator Hirono's office? No, how about Senator Schott? Nobody there. Um, the Governor's Office, Josh Green?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Ryan Aguilar and I'm here uh just to represent Governor's Office. And um I'll attach a link to the latest uh edition, the August edition of the Kialaho, the Governor's Newsletter. Just very quickly, uh, the August newsletter talked about uh today marking the anniversary of the August twenty twenty-three Maui wildfires. So there's a a list of some remembrance events taking place on Maui, as well as a couple of stories around recovery efforts there and health and environmental impact research. That's also by UH. Uh, in July, the governor celebrated the enactment of two hundred and fifty-three bills passed during the twenty twenty-four legislative session. And there's more on that. Uh, there were questions from the last meeting um from board members. One uh was asking about the governor's stance against uh fighting invasive species. Is that still a focus of his? And um uh Governor Green did sign into law twelve pivotal bills aimed at fortifying Hawaii's agricultural resilience as well as enhancing biosecurity measures and promoting responsible land management practices this year. And I can uh provide these links in the chat uh as well. There's also some, in addition, there was some uh state provided uh record funding for biosecurity measures approved by the state legislature this year. And so there's another link that I can provide in the chat for that. Uh, another question was around Senate Bill uh three two zero two um and housing. So there's an article about federal funding uh for more housing that I can uh provide a link to.
Arlene, he's frozen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear him. Can you hear him?
Should I?
Yeah, we're going to continue.
Okay.
Continue.
We can hear you. We can hear him.
And so for Senate Bill thirty-two oh two, um, just a couple of talking points. So there's not enough, I guess, different housing options available for local residents, particularly for those uh middle income and multi-generational households. And then also SB thirty-two oh two requires counties to allow at least two uh accessory dwelling units to be built on residentially zoned lots, uh, if the infrastructure capacity is available, such as enough water or, you know, sewer electrical capacity. And there was a question about state uh building affordable housing around Hart um stations. And is that still happening? And the answer to that one is yes. And is that still happening? And the answer to that one is yes. Um, and for ongoing updates for transit oriented development throughout the state, um throughout the island, you know, you can visit, there's a link that I'll I'll uh provide into into the chat as well. And let's see, there was a question from Linda who asked about a list of bills uh passed and vetoed, and I'll provide that. A complete list. And then there was another question, I guess, about all bills uh signed and completed, if there was anything left to do in that session, or is it wrapped up? And yes, it's all pow. Um, and they point to that link above with the 253 uh bills signed into law. And then finally, uh Bruce Wong had a a comment about the rebate for the HDEA workers. Um, and for that, uh, the the Gov's team suggested uh reaching out and contacting HDEA Union uh directly uh for for comment uh on that. But if you have any questions uh for the Gov's Office, I'm happy to uh to listen and take that back to them. Thank you.
Is there any questions um or in the in-house? No questions. Okay, we have a couple online. Margaret?
Bill 3202 is a, it's gonna be a nightmare. It is just gonna reason, it's not gonna make housing more affordable. It's not gonna make housing, you know, it's not gonna increase housing. All the developers are gonna run to the subtle neighborhoods outside of the TOD areas they're supposed to be, you know, focusing on. And there are no rules. I mean, they can just do what they want to do. And it's just, it's really disappointing. I mean, all the rules are lifted. And it's gonna be really, really hard for the city to control. You know, they, I I don't know whether it's fast track like the last one that he had or what, but it's just, it's it's made it miserable for them, it's made it miserable for us. And it was really a bad, Stanley Chang's bill was a bad bill.
Um, do you have a comment? Or a question?
It's just gonna result in higher density. We've already, we're already super dense. You guys need to focus on the rail stations. And get, and you know, and supporting them.
All right, but let's move on to the the next, who's on the bottom? Uh, we have Daisy.
Thank you. Uh, my question is, we just saw on the news that Merco Grow, all of a sudden, the coconut um beetle larvae was found in bags of Merco Grow. So the thing is, I hope the Department of Agriculture is really chips, uh seriously checking into not only those but other products that are shipped to Hawaii because you know how invasive it gets and um I understand that they don't like cold, but they love warm. So uh, this is just like the far ends, they need to be more aggressive because once it gets cold, it's gonna be super hard to get rid of. Thank you.
Thanks to you for that comment. I will uh take that back to the team.
Yeah, thank you, Daisy. I saw that as well. Um, let's go to Michelle.
Thank you, Vice Chair Velasco, uh regarding Senate Bill 3202. This is an extremely short sighted, narrow minded bill that absolutely uh is destructive to historic and established neighborhoods where people have invested for them, their families to live in uh that uh that have stable environments. Our our neighborhoods in this district, this is a community district, not not just a neighborhood board, it's a community district board. Diamond Head, which is a special district, Kapahulu, which is now being assaulted for higher density, and St. Louis Heights, which may be next. For all of these uh ADUs, two and three, or subdivided into, I mean, single family lots of 3,500 square feet subdivided into 1,200 square feet to make more homes. Um, yet the uh residents who invested in these, who have even left their homes to their families, especially in Kapahulu.
Um, I I.
They are going to be losing their investment, they are going to be losing their quality of life because the state is ignoring the areas that can accommodate the density. And of course, that's around the rail lines. And it's, of course, it's in areas that can be used as uh mixed use areas, uh retail and residential, but not in neighborhoods that are historic like Manoa and established like Kapahulu and also protected as Diamond Head and Pahala even is split because of these uh inconsistent uh proclamations. The problem is zoning, the zoning takes precedent. That's why we have zoning regulations, but the governor is ignoring zoning. And now the DPP is ignoring zoning. We've got to get back to sound planning practices. Thank you.
All right, um, we are getting real close on time. We have to, I've been informed, we have to get through board business and confirmation board details.
I'll be.
So what I'd like to do is, I have a quick question um for the governor's office regarding Bill SB 3202, I would like to know um if he would consider adding provisions that would protect single family homes from becoming bought up by um developers and building, you know, as many little houses as they can put on a lot. I think that would be very worthwhile to look into. And um, okay, with that, let's uh, do we have a quick?
Yes, I have a quick one.
A quick question, Linda.
Yes. Um, thank you for coming, first of all, I appreciate it. Uh, I agree with um Arlene, Michelle and Margaret wholeheartedly. We can't even drive around here to get out of our neighborhood. And we can't um everything, there's so many new housings and new this and new that. There's so dense now, I I'm thinking of moving. You know, it's uh, it's way too much. And please tell the governor that.
All right, thank you. Um, is there anybody else uh has a question for the governor? I think we're we're done. Um, let's go on to, I just uh got a note from the Senator Ihara, he had to leave. So um he says to contact its office if we have any questions for him. And do we have anybody from uh Representative Kobayashi's office? No. How about anybody from Jackson? Saima, Sayama?
Yes, uh, I am.
Oh, I see you. Sorry there. I didn't see you.
Yeah, no, thank you, uh Vice Chair, members of board. Nice to see you. Um, yeah, I'll be very quick. Uh, not a whole lot going up on St. Louis Heights. Uh, there have been some issues reported regarding street parking. Um, but the primary thing I think has been a two street lights that have been out of service due to a utility pole renovation by Hiko. And the street light hasn't been replaced or is no longer functional. And so I've put in a request to the city for the repair of those street lights. Um, that's about it uh from my side.
Great, thank you. Any questions um in-house? None here? Any questions from the in online people? Nope. Thank you very much for coming and and um giving us that report.
Thank you.
And then uh we have a Senator Chang's. Anybody? Am I missing that?
No, I'm here. Hello, everyone.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, I'm so put a couple um links in the chat. The first two links are to view our constituent newsletter and to sign up for our housing newsletter. Um, you see a link to early learning. Um, that's, you can apply your child for a pre-kindergarten spot at I don't know if a hall or or on elementary. Applications are accepted um until spots are full. And please click the link, um, if you want to register a job for pre-K spot. Um, please also save the date for October 10th, which is when the 2024 Children in Youth Summit will be taking place. So if you know a youth who's under the age of uh 24, they can register. And on October 10th, um, they'll all go to the Capitol and talk with lawmakers about um their thoughts on ways to improve the quality of life for youth um in these following areas, healthy body, healthy mind, homelessness and housing, education, equality and the environment. Um, and it's free to uh register. And then finally, the Department of Law Enforcement is offering up the $200 in food and gift cards for community members who turn in firearms in this year's Oahu's gun buyback program. The buyback will take place at Aloma Stadium, lower parking lot on Saturday, August 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And if you have any questions or concerns, please contact the Department of Law Enforcement. Um, their phone number is 808-587-5045. And I'll put the phone number in the chat as well. And I think, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions uh from the audience in-house? No, none here. Uh, online, I see a few hands up. It's Margaret. And um let's, we're, we, let's see, we're at uh 8:24. So if we could keep our comments and questions um short right now, would be appreciated. Thank you. Margaret?
Stanley, Stanley Chang's office is the one that proposed Bill 3202. I want to make sure that he knows that we're upset about it. It's not gonna result in more affordability, it's only gonna result in higher density. And it's a mess and we don't appreciate it.
Um, I I would appreciate if if the um Senator Chang could maybe contact our board and set up a meeting. Um, it is a pretty uh I think the bill needs a rework. Okay, and let's see, Michelle?
Thank you, Vice Chair Velasco. I totally agree with Board Member Merchi. I totally agree with the Vice Chair. The Senator Chang needs to appear before our board to uh respond to the issues that he has created himself. He would like to see Hawaii look like Singapore. High density, crowded, no more sense of place. He is a perpetrator of the destruction of our neighborhoods. And we would like to find out what he is willing to do to protect our neighborhoods instead of create a new dimension that will totally annihilate their integrity and character. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to add with that, we need to really be mindful of the fact that we are living on an island and we are being um affected by sea level rise. And it's only gonna get worse. And that has to be part of the discussion. So you can bring that, but if you could relay that to the Senator, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair Velasco, I totally agree. And I think that we should ask that he be at the next meeting to address these issues personally. Thank you.
That would be appreciated. If he could get back to the board uh with with that request, that we would really um like to hear from him. Thank you. Okay, any comments? Um, and we're going to move on to the um.
I wanted, I wanted to tell Stanley to please come to the board. I don't, it's been a year or something, many requests. So I don't see why he keeps uh avoiding us.
All right, we've we've asked, we've just, I think two people have asked him. Okay, so let's um go on to the City Council, uh Tommy Waters' office, I think Amanda's here.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Amanda here again for City Council Chair Waters' office. Um, I'll try to be brief. Couple of things I had on my report, we've already touched on. I just wanted to follow up. Uh, I know Waikiki parades and street events has been a very big uh ongoing topic. So we're so happy to finally have introduced that bill, Bill 50 uh yesterday at full council at past first reading. We will be um, we're already working on it. The bill, we recognize it's not perfect, but um it was a.
Oh, Amanda, we don't hear you anymore. Can we see what's going on? Uh, okay, well, we'll wait for her to come back. Um, let's see, uh, is, we'll jump to Kelvin's say, and and then we'll go back to Amanda. Hopefully she'll be back on. Is anyone here from?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, there you are. Sorry.
Listening to the discussion for the past two hours, and it's been a great discussion. My reporter's in the chat, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. But the big topic for next week that I hope all of you can attend and the residents of District Five is the City Council meeting with the Department of Planning and Permitting on the Oahu Plan and the Development Plan in each of the different districts that we are trying to address. So all of you will have to have some input of how you would like to see the primary urban center be created or your views of how it should be. Thank you.
Okay, that's uh the meeting that's on Monday.
At Kamiki High School, yes.
Kamiki High School at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
On Monday. Yeah, we announced that uh early on in the meeting.
Great, thank you.
That we all can attend.
Right.
Very important meeting. Uh, okay, let's, uh, is Amanda back on?
I'm so sorry. I don't know what happened. It just totally dropped me. Um, but I think I caught that. A council member said, thank you so much for reiterating the very important PUCDP meeting coming up Monday. We just wanna really drive home how important this meeting is for guiding development for the next few decades. So anyone that has an opportunity, please join us, please help us spread the word and get get uh get as many attendees to that meeting as possible. Um, again, Bill 50, Waikiki Street Parades is a a work in progress. We're working on amendments. Our focus is limiting street festivals um and the overall number. So that's what we're we're gonna be focusing on. Uh, currently in the bill, we're limiting it to nine non-legacy parades. We currently have 14 legacy events. The mayor has six waivers, so we're currently looking at a a minimum to maximum total of anywhere between 20 and 30, and that's still a lot. Um, but it is coming down a lot from what we're where we're currently at. So um again, if you have any comments on that, please stay in touch with us. We are working on amendments and we look forward to the next public discussion on that. If anyone has any other questions or concerns, I'm happy to take it back.
Okay, any uh questions in-house? We have Laura.
We would like to know when there's going to be something in the neighborhood. Last week, there was a parade of Montserrat and people couldn't get in or out uh for part of the day.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, um, Department of Transportation Services has an uh annual schedule. Um, I can, I can find the link and and drop it, or uh it's very easily searchable on Google. It's a 2024 street parades and activities, and it should pop up. And it provides the whole year of pending applications, which ones have been approved, which ones are still pending. It provides information on the street closures, the time, whether it's a First Amendment activity, whether it's a legacy activity and all that good information.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Let, um, let's uh go to Margaret, uh Daisy, and then we have Michelle. And uh please limit your responses to two minutes. Right now, we're running out of time. Thank you. Uh, let's see, let's go with uh Margaret?
Nope.
Nope, I forgot to lower my hand, so.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, let's go to Daisy.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for all the information. And then uh council members say, this is also for you and also member Chair Waters. Kapahulu is an older and Kamiki, St. Louis sides, we're all an older community. Um, you all know that. The thing is, we need to make sure we have enough infrastructure done correctly because the sewer pipes have not been fixed for fifty-plus years. So you know what happens when you're going to increase density. So I suggest that you really look hard and then don't make us like Waikiki thinking that, oh, great, there's another area we can build. Because look at all the things that's happening in uh with those high rises. That does not fit in our community, which is an older historic area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Daisy.
Daisy, I I would recommend that you do attend Monday's meeting just to share your concerns. I agree with you as trying to preserve the residential districts of the District Five that I do represent. But there is tremendous pressures in the District Five because we are part of the primary urban center, which is adopted prior to me being elected. This is where people wanted to have the developments. Not this side, not on the windward side, not central Oahu, but in the primary urban center. And for you who are part of the East Honolulu District, I think you folks are very much well represented by Chair Waters in preserving what you folks have. So I'll leave with that.
All right. I just want to reiterate because I already told the planning commissioners the same thing about the agency sewer infrastructure and we are not going to be able to handle more. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes, you are correct. Thank you. All right, um, let's see, we have Michelle. Is that Michelle? Michelle? You're next.
Thank you, Vice Chair Velasco. Yes, as a follow-up to Daisy's uh excellent remarks. Uh, council members, and this is for both uh council members say and uh council chairs, representative. Uh, the zoning committee has uh been beholden to the HHFDC by greasing through the Kool-Aid Place Project four hundred feet supposedly affordable housing, which it is not. It's market with a couple of token uh lesser uh cost units. Um, how does the council in the future, or would this be left to council member say successor? Uh, plan to uh address the HHFDC's mandates uh and comply with the PUCDP zoning, which the Kool-Aid Place Development violates.
That's a very chill.
No, I'm not finished yet. Thank you. Um. And uh the Bill fifty is a work in progress. I'm so glad to hear that because a lot of progress needs to be made on these issues. The council needs to stand up for our communities and not bow down to uh developers' interests through uh the HHFDC mandates, uh which is publicly funded for exemptions to developers and exemptions for zoning, which are completely inconsistent with our uh history, the integrity of this island and everything our residents have invested in to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, may I just say that payments are well taken and we did try the past two years in trying to address the two-on-H legislation. We have stated for the record, it is state law. Okay, it is passed by the state legislature and then the HHFDC goes through the process. And then if it passes HHFDC, the city council has forty-five days.
That's wrong.
It's wrong, but that's the law. Linda?
Change it.
No, you can approve or deny, and you did not deny.
We are going to deny or approve based on the premise of what is great for the greater good of the residents of Oahu.
All right, I think um it's uh, you know, it's a terrible development and we're not all, I think, pretty much the neighborhood's unhappy about it, but I, you know, other than, I'm not sure how we would proceed to.
Well, let me state for the record, everything has been approved at this point in time. Okay, sixty percent of the units will be affordable. That's all I can say at this point in time. We may have a differences in what is affordable as far as definition. If it's sixty percent AMI to a hundred percent, twenty percent AMI, that's affordable. And what is affordable, based upon what the AMI average median income is for that particular area. But the reason why it's sixty percent affordable is that the other forty percent, the market is supposed to subsidize the affordable. Yes, they did ask for exemptions and fee waivers from the city and the two-on-H law. And we did agree with it. And at this point in time, I feel very comfortable that sixty percent of all these units will be affordable for our local residents who are living here, which may be your children or grandchildren someday. That's all it is.
Well, I have children five hundred K a year.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what they're going to need. Um, so let's go on to.
Excuse me, Chair. I wanted to say something.
Okay, Linda, we're, we have to really get to our board business, so make this short.
All right, um, you know, I feel like the city council is running the show now and they're not representing us. It's like Tommy brings up something and then Calvin say the budget chair just passes it. And they disagree with us, but we're the constituency that the, you know, starting from Laiahe Avenue being taken away from us for two and a half years, they're not listening to us at all.
Yeah, I mean, I I think this is worth contacting their office individually and as uh possibly as a board, if we can all agree and and do something. But right now, um, I'd like to move on to our board business and confirmation of board details. Oh, the that can we make in a um a motion to move Section ten to uh to before Section nine? The board reports, we uh we really need to get to our board business before the night's over.
I motion to skip to Section ten of agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, and if there's any objections.
Discussion. I object because I believe our board reports are really important for the sub-districts and the committee reports, if any. We cannot ignore our board members in this these matters. And uh if we don't have enough time, we need to address this with the Neighborhood Commission Office because they have restricted the time for our meetings. And this is undemocratic. We should be able to get through our full agenda. And they have restricted our minutes. They have restricted the times for our meetings. And this is going to be coming up before the Neighborhood Commission, and we now have some new commissioners who will address this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Laura?
Chair, if people would stick to the time limit, we would be able to get to everything.
Yes, that is an issue.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, okay, we're gonna, three minutes each, board report, sub-district report.
Excuse me, Vice Chair. I believe that the motion was seconded, so we still get to vote on the motion.
Still get to vote. All right. So the motion was seconded by Laura and we're gonna vote. So uh, I guess it, we had one objection. Anyone else objects? Okay, then the motion passes. So we're gonna go to our board business.
Vice Chair Velasco, I call for a roll call vote. Thank you.
All right.
All right. The motion is to move um board min business and confirmation of board details up Section nine or move Section ten before Section nine. Alan?
No.
Boydall? Okay. Decker? David? Hasina? Hasina? Con? Yes. Knight? Yes. Mattson? No. Merchi? Merchi?
I'm requesting for the vote to be repeated if we cannot hear it.
Velasco?
Yes.
White soul, not here. Bruce Wong?
No.
Linda Wong?
No.
Well, she's not here. Okay, the motion doesn't pass. All right, let's go.
No, we need the the vote count needs to be stated.
Okay, so five, um, yes, three. Noes, no absences. Um, we don't have quorum.
Yeah, that's eight, that's quorum. It's all right.
Or, sorry, um. We, yeah, but there is only five votes um that said yes, so.
It doesn't pass.
Yeah, so it doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass.
Okay, let's go on then to the board reports. We have sub-district report, St. Louis Heights, Sub District One.
Uh, the the next meeting for the St. Louis Heights Community Association will be Monday, September nine at seven PM at Hokalani Elementary School.
Someone was talking to you.
Okay, I'll start. The next meeting for St. Louis Heights Community Association will be Monday, September ninth, seven PM at Hokalani Elementary School.
Pardon me, Chair, but didn't the last vote fail so we can't skip to the next uh board business because the vote failed?
We, the vote, so we are going to follow our agenda.
Right, okay.
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
So now we're on to the Kapahulu Sub District Two report. No one has that. Diamond Head Sub District Three.
Yes.
Linda?
Okay, I already reported that I wrote a letter about the Diamond Head uh showers and um I guess that's it.
All right, thank you. Committee reports, I don't have anything on the environment.
Question for the sub-district chair?
Yes.
Uh Linda, would we be able to get a copy of your excellent letter?
Yes, I sent it to the chair, but he didn't send it out, so I'll I'll email it to you and anybody else that wants it.
Thank you, or just send it to uh the Vice Chair and she can get it out through the commission office.
Okay.
Okay.
Mahalo.
All right, um, the committee reports, I don't have anything to add for the environment. Uh, two parks of recreation. Margaret? And Decker? Anything? Okay, I don't hear anything. Okay, planning and zoning. Michelle?
Yes, I think as we discussed previously at this meeting, uh, we really need to get together and uh along with the parks and environment. Committee is that uh Parks and Recreation Committee, I think was mentioned at the meeting uh to uh really um look at the Nautatorium project and create a resolution and support if warranted. Uh, I see that it might be, but uh we'll leave it at that. And um and this could be a joint meeting and all-inclusive of the board members and any members of the public who might be interested.
All right, thank you. That'd be great. Um, traffic and public safety, Margaret? Okay, nothing there. Um, reports from board members attending other meetings. Any? Any inputs there? Okay, I don't. Is that uh a raised hand I see? Okay, Michelle?
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, um, I do have a question because several board members have not been present. And I'm wondering if there are vacancies on the board or have they responded to the questions uh as to their interest. Uh, there have been many absences. And we really need a fully functioning board with uh people who understand the history and the uh functions of our communities.
Um, can we address that with the neighborhood board offline? The um, the the app. I know of one person I haven't seen for months.
Okay, um, so that's up to the board members that are the chairs of these boards. Um, you guys are responsible to make up your own meetings um and have um hold those. And we distribute those committee agendas. Um, but that's all we can do from our part. It's up to you.
But I thought that if you miss three, in a row. I, isn't that the rule?
Asking about the rule about um, it's, I believe, three different absences. Then, I don't know if it's the Neighborhood Ward Commission or if it's the chair, but then there's something that happens and then sometimes those seats get given up and they become vacant.
The chair is supposed to.
That's the protocol they're talking about. Like the attendance.
Yeah, the attendance.
So if you miss three, we give out a um a letter to the board member and then from there.
The board vote.
Okay, so has that, has that been given out? Do it?
Um, no, we haven't. We just started our new um term for this, so everyone restarted. You have, you don't have any. So it restarts on the July. Yes.
Okay, that's all.
And uh.
There's questions about retroactive attendance of different board members that haven't been here for a while, like for last term before July. Is it too late to act on those? Uh, yes, no.
Okay, all right, um, let's see.
The question is, uh, can we contact the board members who are not uh active and ask if they're still interested? And if they're not, we can uh ask for replacements within the communities they represent.
Okay, yeah, that will be the chair's responsibility and we would get into contact with him to give him a heads up and he'll reach out to that board member.
And how many board members have been absent? I can think of three that have not been consistently present.
Yeah, well, we will get with Winston on this um and and resolve it.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, so um now we are on to board tails, uh, meeting to eight time, location and format. So I believe we asked for a first Tuesday of every month instead of a Thursday. And that's what um.
All right, I'm just gonna chime in because I kind of initiated that conversation. I'm, it's Angie. Um, I believe last month we talked about the possibility of either the first Tuesday or the first Thursday, but there was contingencies on location availability, neighborhood board assistant availability and Olo availability. And so we gave it to the chair to look into. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we only have like the first, for proposed new regular meeting day, it would be the first Tuesday. And then for this current location, the Alawai Golf Course Clubhouse Ballroom for the next three remaining months of this year, they're not available. So we'll be at Paki Hale for the remaining of this year. But we did get notification from DPP, I believe. And then they said we can renew our contract and put a request in to come back in the beginning of next year, January.
Okay, can I request that the city clean up the Paki Hale House before we go in it? It was, it was rat and mouse, mice-infested. Does anybody want to make a motion to?
Vice Chair Velasco, I think there was another component to this change, and that was the time. I think there were three times discussed, the present 6 o'clock PM time, which appears to be quite early for a lot of people. And then especially our constituents, 6:30, which is a more of a normal Neighborhood Board meeting time, or 7 o'clock, which was the traditional time that the Neighborhood Boards met. So I'd like to bring that forth as another question and option to vote on. Thank you.
All right. So do you want 6:30 or 7?
I think each member should indicate what their preference would be as far as respecting their constituency.
Okay, so I guess I, I'm a little unsure as to, are we gonna vote first? Are we gonna move from a Thursday, or Thursday to Tuesday?
Chair, may I ask, is, is, did she say, the Neighborhood Assistant, that after we can come back to the Alawai, we wouldn't be able to come back to the golf clubhouse after we go to Paki Hale?
She said that we, if we request it, we can, beginning the first of the year, in 2025.
Yeah, but that's a whole year.
It's half a year.
Yeah, it's subject to availability with this location. They have their schedule full for here. So the best we could do is move to Paki Hale unless the board decides to choose a different location, which we would look into again. So Paki Hale is our set location for next month.
I'm not willing to lose the clubhouse for this.
So I want to understand, if we stay on Thursday, can, is that, we still have to go to the Paki Hale?
Yeah, so either if we keep the regular board this regular day, or change the date, we, either or, we would have to, we have to go to Paki Hale.
Why is that?
Because the availability for the ballroom is full.
We should have got it for the whole year.
The contracts are made for six months. Sorry, that we, we do put in the board's requests, so.
Be from July to July. That's how we've been doing it for years.
So we're being shuttled off to a rat-infested meeting place?
Yes, that's true.
And what about, are there going to be legal actions if somebody gets a toxic disease from this?
No, I can't believe that's true because as a chair and a member, I got, I got from July to July several years in a row. So I don't know why we're being cut off in the middle.
You know, I'm not familiar with this, so I really, I'd have to look into it.
I think we should do that because that's not how it goes. It's for the whole calendar year from July to July.
Yeah, our contracts, like I stated, are only for six months for each location. So.
When did that change?
It changed in July.
You mean, this is the first time it's changing? And who negotiated that change?
The same person who negotiated reducing our hours and cutting down our minutes.
All right, I'm just gonna interject because we have three minutes left. And we should really decide if we're gonna meet next month on the first Tuesday or the second Thursday. I would like to make a motion to move our monthly meeting to the first Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
I'd like to comment on that, please.
Um, to comment, we have to have a second. I'm so sorry. So then we can move to discussion.
I, I, nobody's saying I can't talk, so I'm not willing to lose the clubhouse for it. And we should have the, the clubhouse from July to July. That's how it goes. If we, if there is a change, we should have been advised of that. Because we're going down a river, and we've left our home place. And people in Hawaii like consistency. Now, I understand that you want to be able to comment to the city council earlier. So, okay, that's a good, good reason. But not to have all this disruption.
We have one, Linda, we have one minute left. I think we really should decide if we're gonna change from Thursday to Tuesday.
Tuesday. I vote no. Tuesday.
Okay, we'd have to second, we have a first for Tuesday, we have to have a second. That we can vote. Is, no second?
No second. It's.
All right, then it goes. There's no second. Doesn't change. So we're gonna stay to Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Paki Hale. That's our only option at this point. And I will follow up and make sure that that is cleaned. I will.
No.
It was disgusting. I can't even describe it.
Chair, I move that we represent ourselves and go to the Neighborhood Commission and ask, why has this changed to six months all of a sudden? It's never been like that.
All right, so good, we will do that. All right, let's see, I think we have a few seconds left.
Chair Velasco, we vote to the Neighborhood Commission, and they are in the process of reviewing the neighborhood plan for discrepancies like this. And we need to communicate with the commissioners. There are certain commissioners in charge of the Neighborhood Plan Committee, as well as the Survey Committee, that are excellent. And that's where we go, not to the Neighborhood Commission Office. They are running their own ship, and that has been the problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then it's now 9 o'clock. I think the meeting, I'm going to adjourn it. And there's a lot of follow-up action that has to occur in the next month.
Well, we had a big meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Excellent meeting, Vice Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Appreciate the community's inputs.